Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:30. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, the 9th of June, 2020. And we are in exec-- excuse me, in work session. As posted with our agenda, we have four items for work session today. An update on the 2020 Ironman 70.3. Discussion around land use assumptions and capital improvement plans associated with potential future adoption of impact fees. A COVID-19 update. Today focused more on the CARES Act and the coronavirus relief funds and some programs that we'll be considering later today, the CRF programs. And then finally, just a quick discussion about our still pending disaster restrictions or order that's emergency order that's in place. So we have no item. Item one is citizen comments, and we've got no one that's signed up for citizen comments for work session. So we will go to, we'll go to item two. Item two, one, is the Ironman 70.3 discussion. And I'll call on the city manager, Mr. Atkinson. It's good to have you on the dais. Welcome to the, welcome to the adult table. We're glad you're here.
Mr. Mayor, do I need to make that for a?
Well, there you go. Once you do that, I can turn you on. All right, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It is good to be at the adult table today. I appreciate that. Your first presentation today is really kind of an opportunity as we watch the community continue to reopen and to move forward. Joe Maude is going to come forward. As Joe is doing this, Mayor and Council, I'd like you to join me in congratulating Joe. Joe was previously your deputy emergency management coordinator. As you may know, Mr. Parchman, who has served not only the city of Lubbock, but Texas Tech and others for many, many years, has recently retired. Mr. Maude is now your new emergency management coordinator for the city of Lubbock. So Joe, congratulations. And Joe, with that, let's go ahead and go through our presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
You're on, yeah. Oh, I need to get you, hold on one sec. I gotta get you, all right, there you go. Should be good.
The Ironman 70.3 triathlon is scheduled to be held on June 28th, 2020.
Pull your microphone down a little bit, gentlemen. Thank you.
We have a registered number of 825 athletes that have signed up as of yesterday afternoon. This incorporates a 1.2-mile swim, 56-mile bike, and a 13.1-mile run. This will be the first Ironman triathlon to be held worldwide since March 2020. The race after this will be held in July, is scheduled to be held in July. We've made some changes to the bike route to incorporate portions of the Canyon Lake This Ironman race does provide for qualifying slots to the world championship Ironman race. There have been numerous changes to the Ironman race to include public health recommendations such as social distancing, temperature screenings, wellness questionnaires. They've limited the number of spectators and viewers at transition areas. They've expanded those transition areas to allow for more social distancing. The aid stations have changed from volunteers handing out the products, the food, nourishment type things, to where the athletes pick those up from the tables themselves. Volunteers will also be using, wearing masks and wearing gloves to help protect athletes and the volunteers. As you can see, we have a vast number of city departments that have assisted in planning for the triathlon, as well as partner agencies. We have Marty and Mike Greer with the Ironman 70.3 here in the audience today. As I mentioned, the bike course changed a little bit. We're still having the swim at Dunbar Lake, Canyon Lake 6. It'll start about 6:30 in the morning with the swim, and then they will transition to a bike race, bike course that goes up Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, out East 19th to the county, come back in. They will stay, once they come back in on East 19th, they will stay on Idlewood Road, and then they will utilize the Canyon Lakes Drive, go past the Windmill Museum, the Ag Museum, joint land, around to Adesland Park and proceed. This year, we pulled the bikes off of Marsha Sharp Freeway with the exception of blocking two onramps and one off-ramp. So the Avenue L on-ramp, bikes will go up onto Marsha Sharp, stay in the merge lane, and exit University exit. They'll come down University, turn into Tech Campus at 8th Street, Glen Goodacre. Transition area will be to the run at that point. They will complete three laps on Tech Campus, finishing at the Engineering Key. City Bus is providing a shuttle for the participants, for the athletes. They will pick them up from the west parking lot of Jones AT&amp;T Stadium, transport them to Sunrise Canyon where they will drop them off. They'll walk down a pre-defined path to the start area. Traffic restrictions, as you may notice from last year's route, we pulled them off of Martin Luther King Boulevard for as much as possible. So it's going to be shared use from East 24th up to Idlewood Road. Idlewood Road and then East 19th will be shared use. Down Texas and Buddy Holly from 1st Street down to the access road will also be shared We've made some changes to the University and 4th Street intersection to help lessen the traffic and risk to participants and the public where traffic will be directed away from that intersection. With that, that completes our presentation. Are there any questions that you may have?
Questions for, for Mr. Modi on the Ironman 70.3, or comments? Joe, before you, Ms. Garza?
No.
Ms. Garza's just figuring out the new system over there. We've got a little head start on her.
Oh, no, Mr. Chaddis.
Mr. Chaddis?
I'm not ready.
Okay. Mr. Chaddis?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, you mentioned, I don't know if I've heard it right, 825 participants?
Yes, sir.
Good grief. You say their participants, participation will be limited?
They're capping it at 1,000 participants. They've had 825 register so far, and, but once it gets to 1,000, that's what they're capping.
So 1,000 is the cap?
Yes, sir.
Social distancing, surely, I mean, how are you even going to begin something like that? Or is it even possible?
With packet pickup, which will be at the Civic Center, they're going to put social distancing signs out to keep athletes spread apart for doing their bike setup or their race setup, their scheduling times, and only allowing 125 to set up at any given moment. Then they will come back in, disinfect everything, and then allow the next 125 participants to set up. Once they get to the swim, they'll do a staggered start. They've spread out the racers as they start to where they're only allowing limited groups in the water to start, and then as the race progresses, people spread out. Just that, surely.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Mr. Atkinson?
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to be quick to get in the queue for the next time you called me. I knew I shouldn't have been able to come to the adult table today.
Chief Ferguson, Chief Mitchell, you guys, you think maybe we need a little help up here? Do you think, what do you think? You think we need a little?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, good. I was just making sure. I should have to leave you on the, all, all the time there, as he quickly turns his microphone off. Mr. Christian?
I was just curious of the number of participants. Do we have any idea how many international participants will be, be in Lubbock for this event? And also, and a follow-up question, I'm sure there's some sort of pre-health screening, so when they come to town, will they have already been tested for COVID? And I'll hang up and listen.
I can answer to the pre-wellness check. Before they register, they have to pass an initial questionnaire and a temperature check. If they fail that, they go to a secondary screening that will be staffed by Lubbock Fire Rescue paramedics. If they fail that screening, temperature screening and the questionnaire, then we send them. They have to have a negative COVID test before they're allowed to participate. In regards to your question about international athletes, I'll have to refer to Marty Greer.
Can you hear me here, or do I need to hear you?
Come. We want to make sure we get your picture on, on TV.
So as far as the international students, students, participants, there's been a number of people, we allow a deferral. If a person can't compete in a race in the current year, they can defer to the next year. The people from Mexico, the UK, and Australia have deferred so far.
There would be more?
There could be more. I can answer that question after I look through the database carefully, but not truthfully until I look. And as far as the social distancing in the very beginning, prior to them all being in the transition area at a certain point in time on race morning, there's only 125 at any given time in the same space.
Ms. Parson-Harris?
Just kind of a follow-up from Mr. Christian's question. Through the, the health screening, you said if they somehow fail because of the initial point, whether it's temperature and whatnot, then they're moved to an additional area at that point that they would be administered a COVID-19?
It would be actually after that if they fail the second screening.
Fail the second screening.
The second screening allows, because it's a temperature-based screening on the first one with the questionnaire, it allows, if their temperature is elevated, gives them 30 minutes with no fever, no, any medicine to treat that. If their temperature has decreased, then they would be allowed to go into the expo and register.
Okay, so let's say someone makes it to the point that they require a COVID-19 test. Are we, are we using the fast-track tests that give us 15 minutes? Because otherwise, we're looking at a couple of days or so to get the results in that. How far in advance are we having participants show up in town that we can manage or monitor those things?
The packet pickup and the registration starts Friday, and then it continues Saturday, and then they have the race Sunday. But we are utilizing the rapid test for that.
Marty, Mike, thank you guys very much. We're excited about this. I think, I think one of the things that, to me, is a, there are a lot of reasons why. I think we can do it safely, and once we can do it safely, I think it's a great event to have. I think it's great for our community. Last year, somewhere over 90, over, well over 90% of the people who participated came from outside Lubbock. So those people are going to spend the night in hotels, they're going to eat in our restaurants, they're going to shop in our stores, and, and right now, that's needed. And so if we can do this safely, I think it's a great way to start doing something a bit more normal. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, before you leave, we're coordinating, it's a great opportunity to, to thank Joe for something, but on Saturday, along with the cactus feeders or cactus cares, their found, their, their philanthropic arm and the South Plains Food Bank, and Hillside Church, and United Supermarkets, and many other partners, we are doing a feeding event where people can get a free box of food that includes protein, dairy, cheese. It's, it's a really, it's not your, if you've ever done a food box out at the, at the food bank, with all due respect, this is not one of those. They're much more substantial. And we're doing it in the, in the Saturday morning from 8:00 to 12:00 in the, in the Jones Stadium parking lot, on the, on the west side of the parking lot. And it takes a lot of coordination. And word got back to me from the people who were working with Joe on this, just what a great job he was doing. In fact, I can't remember what it was, but we may have to, you know, lock him up because they may come try to get him. But, but thank you for hitting the ground running. I know with working with Jay, you were, you had a great, a great mentor, and we're glad that you're in the position you're in, okay? So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item 22, land use assumptions and capital improvement. This is the discussion that carries over from our work session a week before last. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Today's item is exactly that. It's a follow-up to the public hearing that was conducted at your prior council meeting. Mr. Mike Keenum, your city engineer, is going to kick it off, and then Mr. Whitaker will join. This presentation, I believe, will answer many, or at least illustrate many of the questions posed by the council. There's a couple we're still working through. They've done a tremendous job. Before we begin, we can continue the festivities by congratulating Mr. Keenum on a landmark birthday. I'll not call out which one. I'd like to congratulate him on extreme upgrade in his dress code. You'll notice today the bow tie rather than, we're not sure if that's--
70 never looked so good, you know?
Never, never looked so good. Hairstyle seems, seems to be holding up and so forth. But Mike, happy birthday. Thanks for your efforts, and if you would, kick us off.
Thank you, Jared. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just for the record, I tied this myself to it. It's not a clip-on, so.
I did. My son taught me how to do it last night, so.
I have to check you out. My uncle was family of full-time lawyers.
Please, please do.
You do, that you do. Good evening, or good afternoon, if you can, please take it away.
Okay. And so like city manager said, I'm going to start and then turn it over to, to Mr. Whitaker. But really, I wanted to start by, by telling you all something that you already know, and that's that we have a problem of funding infrastructure. That's not anything new. We've not been able to keep up with roadways, and my fear is that in the future, we are going to have trouble keeping up with water and sewer infrastructure, building this infrastructure. We have the same goals that the builders and developers have in this town, and that's to continue to grow the city. It's a great city to live in, and to keep the cost as low as possible. That is staff's goal, that is the committee's goal, and I know that's the builder and developer's goals too. And so all of those, we understand, we're hearing what they're saying, and trying to do this in expedient ways we can. I think we all recognize we can't keep doing things the way we've always done. We've fallen behind, and if we keep doing things the way we've always done, we'll keep falling further behind. And so just understanding that, that's something that you all know, but just wanted to make sure that we're aware of that. We're simply presenting impact fees as an option of funding. It's something that came out of Plan Lubbock 40 as the, one of the primary initiatives to, to look at funding infrastructure for the future. And so understanding that process is important. It's an option, it's not the only option. That's the one we've been tasked to look at and to present to you guys at this point in time. We are still in the middle of step one of the process. This first public hearing that has been continued to later in this month is still part of the land use assumptions and the capacity plans. Not the policy discussions, not all those, although today, we're going to talk a lot about the policy questions that you all have had, which is really step two. So understanding that that's, that's part of it, is this presentation, a lot of it today, we're going to start with the land use assumptions and what that looks like. And so we've got several different things that you all have asked for, seeing how it kind of lines up there with several different things to, to present to you all of questions, specific questions that you had from the public hearing, and then probably will continue to have as we move forward. As we look at projected citywide growth, what this looks like, you, you've seen this slide before, but this was based on Plan Lubbock 40, 2040, and the future land use plan, and how we developed what projections are for growth. As we start looking at projections and the infrastructure needs, we've got to plan for the projected growth. And so if we short-circuit ourselves, then we fall further behind on building infrastructure. And so we want to be as realistic as we can by being a little bit aggressive. We would rather be a little bit aggressive to make sure that we're keeping up instead of falling further behind. As the comp plan looked at, Plan Lubbock 40, we expect to see continued growth as this is a census year. You know, historically, we see a little bit of a bump that we tend to forecast low, and we see bumps in census years. We're in the middle of that right now. We are a regional medical hub, we know that that's going to continue to grow. Texas Tech is, continue to have an emphasis on growth, focusing on retaining graduates here in Lubbock, Texas. And again, once we reach 250,000, which we've already surpassed, historically, other cities and information that we've got is that we see an exponential increase in growth rate once we've passed that point. This is a historical compounded annual growth rate for the city of Lubbock going back to 1950. And you can see from 1970 to 2016, we had a 1.92% compounded annual growth rate up to that point. And this ends in 2016. So this is a look back of where we've been, and we're trying to look into the future of where we're going to go. As you look at variability of growth rates, what the different numbers are, this is, this is ranging from 1% to 3%. As the CPAC, the Comprehensive Plan Group, looked at this, they evaluated these percentages in the growth rates from anywhere from 1% to 3% based on what we've seen and where we think we see the growth going for the city of Lubbock. That committee landed on 2.5% as being a reasonable yet aggressive growth, growth rate that we think is, is predictable, or we hope that we attain that. The committee, looking at impact fees, with all the work that that group had done, it made sense to them to, to further adopt that same 2.5% growth rate. As that process through the Plan Lubbock 40 went through, some of the changes that future land use plan, based on public input, resulted in higher anticipated density and an overall increased population growth of where they started when they started looking at that. And really, the conversation changed from what has our growth rate always been, to how do we prepare for anticipated growth in, through, through 2040? And so that really becomes a paradigm shift, if you will, not just where we've been, but where we think we're going to go to build the infrastructure that we need to, to be ready for that, that growth. As you all have asked us to do, we kind of did a ratio reduction from 2.5% growth to 2% growth, and we just ratioed that down across all the different service areas. If we want to go back and really want to consider the 2%, we're going to need to do some more refining, because we just simply reduced all the service areas by that equal amount, basically reducing about 17,000 people. So you see, the number that you saw previously was about 77,000 additional people through the next 10 years with a 2.5% growth. If we do 2% growth, that's a little over 60,000 additional people. Again, trying to figure out where those bodies are going to go, where they're going to live, where their homes are going to be built. We've spread them throughout the city based on the trends that, that we've already presented to you all. Emphasis on the comp plan of trying to encourage development in North and East Lubbock. We know South and West Lubbock are continuing to grow, and so spreading those people out, distributing those 60,000 or 77,000 people throughout the city, and the required permits and buildings and homes that would come with that. And so again, we just did the ratio down. If we want to focus in on the 2%, we're going to have to do some more work on the consultant side to really make sure those distributions are accurate. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitaker from Kimley Horn to, to continue with the presentation, again, some more specific questions that you all have. Good afternoon. One of the questions we heard was, you know, what, kind of looking at other cities, fast-growing cities, what are, what are, what are they doing? So one of the comments that we looked at is, most larger and faster-growing cities have a way that new development contributes to the arterial system. And by defining that, as I basically looked at, I think Lubbock was the 11th largest city on the, in Texas. When I looked at it, I looked at the 10 cities that are larger, and nine of those 10 cities had some tool in their toolbox. Not all of them had impact fees, but some of them had border street policies, TIA's. They had some other elements in their toolboxes. So just looking at the, the larger cities in Texas, they all had something in their toolbox outside of a curb and gutter policy. One of the things we also looked at is the fastest-growing cities in Texas, which percentages can be somewhat deceiving, so a smaller city grows at a faster percentage than a larger city. So I pulled the fastest-growing cities in Texas, and that's what you see. They were, I just limited that to the ones over 50,000 people. So these were the top fastest-growing cities in Texas with over 50,000 people. And what you see at, at the fast-growing cities, around 50,000 people, they're starting to utilize impact fees as a toolbox. You know, when you look at water and wastewater, all of them had water and wastewater. And when you looked at roadway, not every city had roadway, because they may have some other tools in their toolbox, but some of our own process or many of them have them. And then a lot of the smaller cities from 10 to 50,000, either, especially when they're growing fast, that's when they start evaluating. A smaller city, you know, the size of 5,000 people may not need them at that point, but when they start getting 10 to 50,000 people, they start looking at them. So this was really a summary. The real tick away from this is, what you realize is the faster-growing cities and using the larger cities have some sort of impact fee or transportation or water funding system on their books. Another question we have is, well, what are other cities doing? So I want to break this discussion into two points. The first slide is the rate reduction comparison. We talked a lot about our job as the consultant is to calculate what that ceiling is, what's the maximum fee. The job of councils decide, you know, anything from zero to the maximum fee. Most of our research showed on water and wastewater, it's pretty common across the state. When they have them, they adopt the study, that 50% number. That's pretty common when you look across the state. Most cities do something similar to that. Roadway was kind of all over the place, because unlike water and wastewater, you hear water and wastewater, there's one service area. Roadway has multiple service areas, so a lot of cities have more discussion on the roadway side of where to set the rate. So the table I put together with you was just a handful of cities that I was able to pull of some of the decision makings on the rate. So when you look at Midland, they, they adopted 37.5%. Now remember, there's a cap at 50%. You'll see a few of these are over 50% because they did that extra calculation to get them above 50%. But when you see 50%, sometimes that's the cap. So Midland decided to charge 37.5% on houses, townhomes, and duplexes. I want to make that distinction just because it's not all the residential categories, it was just those specific residential categories. It wasn't the multifamily categories they did it for. And non-residential, they charged 50%. And when you go through here, you'll see the term "flat average." So if you look at Fort Worth, it says they charge 43% flat average. Well, they have 17 service areas throughout the city where they charge impact fees, and they wanted to charge the same in every service area, so that percentage changes in each service area. But if you take on average, they charge 43% for residential and 25% for non-residential.
That would, that would build on the comment you made a couple weeks ago about Fort Worth has waived impact fees or lowered them significantly for some of their, in, in fact, they don't even do them inside the loop, as I recall.
Inside the loop, correct. That's correct. Yeah, and you'll see, there's some policy decisions on the next slide. I'll show you some of the policy ones.
Okay, thank you. Good, I know we talked about that.
But, and Denton, very similar, they did 20% flat average and 15% for non-residential. And when you look through these various rates, most of them, most cities pick some kind of percentage for residential, and then some kind of percentage for non-residential, and that's how most of them approach it. It's all, you'll see a few varies on the slide, and that's because, you know, McKinney and Seguin for non-residential, they kind of, they, they, they did some different things on non-residential instead of just doing that flat percentages. There's some discounts and incentives that many of the cities did. These were for the cities that the advisory committee looked at in very specific. One of the things I wanted to put on here is, the discounts and incentives are not common. The previous slide I just showed you on the rates, every city goes through that. They, they decide what percentage to say, every city goes through that. On some of these discount incentives, not every city goes through that. And so Midland, as you've heard before, they had a two-year grace period for already-platted single-family homes, townhomes, and duplexes. State law requires that one-year grace period, but for the single-family townhomes and duplexes, they extended that to two years. Fort Worth, as the mayor mentioned, they don't charge impact fees inside the loop, and they also have four of East Fort Worth service areas that are at a different discount. Fort Worth charges 37.50 per single-family home, that's their flat rate, and East Fort Worth is they, they maintained an older rate. They never raised the rates in East Fort Worth. They also have an adequate public facilities discount. That means if a development chooses to build on a roadway that's already built, already built to its ultimate configuration, they get a discount. There's a mixed-use discount, that's what that land use transportation discount is for. So if you build a, kind of a, you know, retail on the bottom, apartments on the top, you get a discount up to 15%. And then there's an extraordinary investment discount. This is kind of their economic incentive discount, and the requirement is $15 million in investment, 100 jobs at two times the minimum wage, and they can get a pretty big discount. That's a pretty hefty dollar to meet, but I think they've given it to Bell Helicopter and American Airlines are the two ones that have received that. and American Airlines are the two ones that have received that discount for Fort Worth. And then, they have no change-of-use fees, and this is, this actually came after they already implemented the program, and that just means they were having, not very many appeals happen in Fort Worth now, but when they first started, there was a lot of appeals, and most of the appeals were change-of-use. It would change from an office to a restaurant, so therefore, it generates more traffic, they would do it. So they did away with change-of-use, because it was taking a lot of staff time and only delivering very minimal dollar amount to their capital. So that was a policy decision that they made after they implemented the program. And Denton, they had two different incentives, and Denton at the time of the adoption, industrial was something they were trying to attract as the city, so they capped industrial. They made industrial very attractive to the city. And they limited change-of-use. Unlike Fort Worth, where they said, "We're not even going to deal with change-of-use," Denton said, "Well, we're going to deal with change-of-use if it's a big change-of-use." So they defined that in the ordinance. New Braunfels, they had an exemption for affordable housing that's defined by the federal government, and then they also had, council was given the authority to exempt by development agreement. That was just something that's written in their ordinance. But these were just the ones that we had covered and some ordinance that we had shared with the advisory committee, so I wanted to share these with you as well. Getting into the calculation a little bit, this is just a reminder that the dollar amount is not the whole pie, it's just a one piece of the pie. The pie is divided up into three sections. There's an existing need, there's a tenure need and a future need, so everything we're looking at is the green. And so, when we actually figure out these dollar values, it's just the green portion of the pie. This chart has a lot of numbers on it. What this comparison is doing, these were sample developments in the city of Lubbock. Where you see red highlighting on here, that's actually where they're located. So we took realistic, real developments in the city to actually calculate what their fees will be. So I'm going to highlight the two examples that ring home most to me. I looked at the Chick-fil-A and the Garden Office. They're approximately the same size. They're five, the Chick-fil-A is 5,163 square feet, the Garden Office is 5,940 square feet. Both of these are in service area E. The Chick-fil-A for roadway would have been 154,322. Water and wastewater, with the assumptions we made for the meter size, were 1843 and 1798. For a total of 157,000, that would have been the total maximum allowable cap for the impact fee. And if you're in service area G, which is in the central city, that would have been 7,214. So you can see the difference in dollar amount. The comparison is, if you look at a garden office, which is almost the same size, it generates a lot less traffic, so it's $20,000. I will tell you just for anecdotal, Chick-fil-A is one of the bigger square footage, so if you remember, fast food restaurants are on the size of building footprint, so a normal fast food restaurant's half the size of a Chick-fil-A. So just kind of keep that in mind. So if you think of a different fast food restaurant, it may be half the dollar amount because it's based on square footage. So those are the two examples I was going to highlight on here. One thing I want to note that these are, these are the max fees, they don't include any of those rate reductions or discounts that I just talked about. So when you think about other cities, the next slide takes those same developments, and is really just taking service area E's example, which service area E isn't the top, it's the second highest dollar service area. Service area F, which is in South Lubbock, would be the, a little bit higher than service area E, but it compares them to the cities that we've been discussing with the advisory committee. These are just randomly picked cities, just to get you a feel what other cities are doing. And you see single-family home in service area E is 2952. You see HEB listed here twice, once is a supermarket, once is a store. And that's because when you go to HEB, when you think of a traditional supermarket, you're thinking of a 40,000 square foot building, and you think of an HEB, it's 135,000 square feet building. So it's not quite a supermarket, it's not quite a store. So when we get into the administration side, I put those as a range. Some cities do them as a supermarket, some cities choose to do it as a discount store, some cities do it as a hybrid. So you kind of see two numbers in front of you for HEB. We took the Exelon Apartments, that's one building, it's a 12-unit building, so each unit in that building. And we looked at each of these with the comparisons across the various cities. Now, one thing to note is that the, unlike Lubbock, that's showing your maximum, the other cities are showing their actual. So these are actually what they're collecting, so this is with their rates and discounts And if you, you can kind of look back at previous slides, because all these, I put the rate, the percentages in all these cities in the previous slide, you can kind of see where they adopted on their percentages.
So to confirm, Mr. Whitaker, let's go back down to the Chick-fil-A example. What you show in red, that would be the amount before the policy reduction, right?
That's correct.
Which is required by state law.
Yeah. This would be your cap. This is the highest that it could be, if you adopted 100% of the study.
Okay.
Or the 50% number that we'll be presenting to you.
Excuse me, say that again? This would be the highest at 50%?
This is the 50% number.
That is the 50% number?
Correct.
Okay. I thought you, I thought I heard you say it was the 100%.
I said that, then I realized, I was like, it's the maximum you can charge, which is the 50% number.
Okay.
They don't make the percentages easy with the reductions and everything. But all the rest of the cities show their actual rates. We did go back and look at the impact from a 2.5 to 2%.
Mr. Whitaker, hold on for one sec, Ms. Joy.
I heard you say earlier that some cities have exceeded the 50%, that they have to go and do an extra step. Would you talk to us about that?
Absolutely. So the 50% number is really to give credit for avalorm taxes, or on the water and wastewater side, it's avalorm taxes and your utility rates, so you're not getting a double dip. There is a financial calculation that you can do that actually calculates what that percentage is. State law randomly selected 50%. It's just written in state law, chapter 395, it says, "Take 50%." Well, in a city like Lubbock that has a strong tax base, probably 50% is a considerably high double-dip number, meaning that you're probably not getting 50% of the taxes from the future government, from the future development to go towards roads. But the assumption is that that's what state law allows us to do. So we can go through a detailed calculation to basically figure out how much of the taxes that the future development will pay that goes towards roads. We chose not to do that in Lubbock, we just cut it in half per state law. Does that make sense?
Well, I think, I think what I hear you saying is that it could be more than 50% if you did that calculation.
It would probably be significantly more than 50% in a city like Lubbock.
Right, thanks.
Fort Worth was about 8% reduction, so just for comparison. Every city's a little different, because it depends on their tax base, but that was for Fort Worth. Impact fees are changing the growth rate from 2.5 to 2%. One of the items we looked at, we were able to do this on the roadway side, we haven't quite done on the water and wastewater side, but we think the results will be very similar. We talked a lot about last time is that, you know, what we're trying to calculate as part of impact fees is a per-unit growth. So as you grow, you need more infrastructure. As you don't grow, you need more infrastructure, and they're going to pay for it when we go. So when we adjust that growth rate, like we talked about, especially with the ratio, just kind of ratioing it down, it really hits both the numerator and the denominator, so you don't see a whole lot of movement. You see more movement in the service area G and H, because there's not as many projects there, so when you lower that denominator, it goes up a little bit. But in the high-fast-growing areas, you don't see it move very much. It was about a $3 change at most, which if you think about on the roadway side, going from 2.5 to 2% per growth, it comes up to about $9, because that factor is three. Obviously, if we got into more details on the land use, as Mike was talking about, and we allocate the growth a little differently, it might change a lot, but we don't anticipate it changing dramatically, especially in service areas A through F. One of the questions that got brought up last time was the median values and the median income of, in the various service areas. So we created this chart for you. This is based on the median home value, and the median income was based on the census data from the census department, and then the average home value was calculated. Kind of gives you a, you know, a feel throughout the city of the different values. Now, the home, just to clarify for the home, that's total homes, that's not new homes, that's total homes in that area.
Right.
So this was just to kind of give you a feel in the different service areas, the different levels of housing values and income. And those are the questions that we answered today.
Okay, so open the floor for questions from Mr. Whitaker or Mr. Keenum. Mr. Keenum, why don't you start by, before we, I'll go to Mr. Chides next, but before we go to Mr. Chides, or maybe to Ms. Patterson-Harris, but before we go there, remind council that we're not, we're not, we're not posted to make decisions tonight. We continued the public hearing to our next council meeting on the 23rd.
Correct.
On that evening, we could, if we chose to make, there's some, I think, two policy decisions in front of us. Can you go through those real quick?
So basically, on the 23rd, is that you're reviewing the report that has been presented back in March, that has been published online, that y'all have a copy of, and that's simply the land use assumptions and the list of the projects. So those show the total value of the projects, not this recoverable cost that we've been talking about. So those are the only things that are really before you, to approve that process, that you approve of the land use assumptions that have been made and that growth rate that has been made, and you approve of that list of projects. And so, you can amend that, you can say, "We don't like some of those projects, we think there's too many on there, we don't like the growth assumption, we want to change that." And so, if you do minor changes, we can make those changes and then bring them back at the second public hearing. If there's some major changes, we would kind of have to almost start over. And so, it depends on what your pleasure is from the council, and, but that's what will be before you at June 23rd. Nothing tonight, no action tonight, but just continuing that public hearing, hearing from the public and their input of what is it that we're looking at? And so, it's the land use assumptions, it's the capacity plans for roadway, water and sewer. You're not committing to any of those three, you're not committing to charging anything for any of those threes at that point in time. That would be at the next step, where you could make that decision if you wanted to remove some of those from the equation, or keep them in, set them at zero, or whatever you wanted to do. So that's not anything we're doing tonight, nor will it be anything that we do on the 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Keenum. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I just wanted to agree with Mr. Keenum, because in my world, the saying is, "You keep doing what you're doing, you're going to keep getting what you're getting. If nothing changes, not a darn thing changes." And I know that we feel that something has to change. I have a request more than anything, is that I'm interested in getting the information or seeing with the piece from New Braunfels, the exemption for affordable housing. If you have that information available, I would really be interested in seeing that, see what it looks like and how it's working for that area.
And that's, and just making sure that we understand, I think for that one, affordable housing is the federal guidelines of affordable housing, not the affordability of housing.
Exactly, yeah.
Two different things that keep getting kind of mixed up.
Yeah, I just want to take a look at it. I know that we have certain projects within this city, and I know that how it could impact them, but is that a reason to say no? But I just want to take a look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Keenum or Mr. Whitaker, I don't know who would be able to answer this one, but I would like to see some examples of incentivizing that was used in different cities, and some numbers attached to it, growth patterns, for example, because I'm looking at slide on page number eight, section C and section D, basically east of the interstate, lowest growth rate. And I'm thinking possibly by incentivizing, this may change the dynamics of those two sections. So I'm curious as to what's happened to dynamics in other cities for the incentivizing program? Has it been effective? Has it not been effective?
That definitely has been a key of some of the discounts and incentives that I mentioned to you. So for clear on Fort Worth, one of the reasons they didn't charge in the inner city, the inside the loop is there's not a lot of infrastructure projects, so much like your service area G and H, the fees are low. So in Fort Worth, saw the level of the fee, they just said, "Hey, we're not going to go with the administrative burden to administer in the inside." But in East Fort Worth, they did discount it, and the reason they discounted it was a low-growth area, and they were trying to incentivize that area to, for affordability and various reasons. And they had, they did, they've seen some movement. It took more than impact fees in their toolbox to incentivize it, it took some other investment tools, too, but they have seen some movement in East Fort Worth recently.
Can you, can you, give me a number on Fort Worth, the incentivizing? What was the difference in the percentage?
It was 37.50 versus 2,400. I don't know what that difference was, for a single-family home.
Yeah, there's some numbers there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Joy.
Just looking at these eight service areas, those are obviously not council districts, because there's only six of us, but regardless of what happens in the 2020 census, will these service areas remain the same?
Yes, it'd be based on annexation more than anything, it's not the census.
You mentioned that there are some other tools that you could use for roadways versus impact fees. What are those?
There's a lot of, there's a wide variety of tools, and some are growth-related, some are not growth-related. So growth-related are common tools, like border street policy. So a city, a development comes in, they build the street next to them. Some of them's a traffic study, they, based on some thresholds, they have to build the street, fix the intersections. So you've probably heard of muds and pids, maybe? Those are, that's a form of, a way to get infrastructure built. Some cities, not commonly in Texas, has implemented like a, this is more on the existing infrastructure side, like a maintenance fee to try to free up some money for capital. There's a, Plano recently did a Traffic Management Association, which is basically a sales tax thing where they can pool funds together in a certain area to pay for infrastructure improvements. There's a wide, there's not a long list of sources, but there's a, there's, those are the ones that come off the top of my head, and I'm happy to send a list to Mike or yourself of maybe more of those options and what those are.
Okay, and then, you said that in New Braunfels, the council has the authority to exempt by development agreement. Obviously, that's a tool that's been used by the city of Lubbock, was agreements with developers where they might have built a third, a third, a half, whatever. Kind of tell me how that would work? Give me kind of a footprint. How would that work?
Well, there are some cities that don't allow exemption of impact fees. They would require to be paid by the economic development. So when, 2008, when New Braunfels was considering impact fees, they wanted to make sure council had it written in the ordinance that they could do that, because if it's not written down, then it's a question of whether or not they could exempt them or not. So that was the real reason why New Braunfels did it in 2008. Most cities work through things on economic, whether the 380 agreement, and work through, you know, "We're going to give you this if you give us that type of agreement." Kelly, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, it sounds like that's a provision that we might want to retain.
Yeah.
For example, instead of 50-50, maybe we wanted to work with the developer on, or developers on a third, a third, a third, and that would give us the ability to do that, would it not?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we still have the ability to do those type of developer agreements, this is just, that's still a tool that exists.
Okay.
I don't think impact fees would negate that tool from what we already have in place. It would just add on to that. So you could still do that if developer wanted to build 70% of that and pay for that, or 30%. Or 30% is the only piece that's recoverable in this calculation.
So why did New Braunfels wanted it, want it written in if it, we could already do
I think it was, it's been, it was written in 2008, and I'm jogging my memory back, but I think there was just some fear, there was some folks that said, "You can't exempt impact fees, period. They have, they have to be paid." So it was more of the discussion if a development came in, that the economic, the 4A board would have to pay for the impact fee for the development to the Public Works Department, and they wanted to make it clear that that necessarily didn't have to happen. So that's what, it was more of a suggestion from a certain person, not that, that's one of the few cities. We were going through, it's written in their exemption section, so I was just sharing that with everyone, but a lot of cities operate that way anyway without it written in their ordinance, so.
Okay. And back to Mr. Chides, clearly, some of the service areas would be the areas that we would have different impact fees. Is that correct?
Yes. You could charge the same percentage in all the service areas. You could charge a flat rate, or you can vary in my service area if you choose.
Or not charge at all?
Or not charge at all. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Whitaker, it was brought up about affordability of housing. Not affordable housing, but affordability of housing and the difference in that. From what I understand by law, state law, there's about 20% cities that do offer discount for affordability of housing based on square footage.
In Texas, there's not any city, on impact fees, I don't know of any city that's implementing that currently right now.
Mr. Weber.
Discounts that are available.
I think that you can make a policy decision to do that. In Texas right now, across the U.S., there are cities that have done.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, so nationally, not necessarily in Texas.
I think that would be one of your policy decisions.
By square footage, is my point. And thus getting smaller homes into affordability.
You would still be, just for clarification, if you look at service area E, your maximum would be 2952. As long as it's not going over that 2952, you could break it down by square footage. If you wanted to give anything less than square footage, some sort of discount, that's 2952, good to do that.
Obviously, it would be, it would have to be a calculation determining what affordability really means in Lubbock, as far as how a zone match, let's say.
Yeah. The biggest question's going to be, you know, the administration side, make sure you can demonstrate that properly. Just to keep it in mind, too, for thinking through that, is that, you know, say you create your threshold at some number, and a home comes in smaller than that, and then they want to do an add-on, or they want to enclose a garage and stuff like that, then where does that fall? So those are things that we'll just have to think through if that's the direction this council wants to go. The future administration of that just becomes problematic in my head. And so, you know, if you're interested, my recommendation would be to a flat percentage of reduction, you know, whether it's a big number, 25% reduction for all residential. I know you're trying to tip your hat to the affordability of homes, but we've just got to be careful when we're starting to cut that slice of the pie a little smaller. Administering that on our side will become problematic depending on what happens. And so, you know, you talk about square footage, does that mean a home? Does it include garage? Does it include outbuildings? Where do you draw that line? And then we do additions. How does that play in there? So is the shed count, is the shed over 50 square feet count? You know, so those are the things that we need to think about, if that's the direction we want to go. And that's clearly, that's a policy decision that is the next step that we're talking about now. So if that's something that has legs, we definitely need to look into that more and just think through how that will affect staff and the administration of that going forward.
Well, I've got you at the mic. Mike?
Yes, sir.
The majority of developer agreements we've had in the past are 70-30, correct?
That's correct. By state law, we are limited to a maximum contribution of 30% of what's built.
Right. I just want a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so council, just to, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Thank you, Mr. Keenum. I think to, just to remind everyone that I know that we, there were a couple questions asked for some follow-up to today, but you've now been given the, I think, much of the information that we had asked for. I know some of you had, had individual meetings that you've scheduled to learn more and to ask your own questions, but I think that's the path we need to remain on between now and the 23rd. Mr. Atkinson, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. Well said.
Okay. Okay, next on our agenda is item 23. It's COVID-19 updated in discussion. Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to try to display the first of these two presentations over the airplay, so I think there's a selection for you up there.
I'm sorry, this is, okay, here we go. Ms. Murphy's going to present this.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay, that's.
Is this the one, you want to do this one first?
No, sir, let's do the other one first.
And you've got it, is that correct?
I have it, and it's connected on the airplane.
It's on ClickShare?
ClickShare. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Atkinson.
Mayor and city council, we're going to walk through this item. As the mayor teed us up earlier today, we're going to do just a very brief general update, really today more to focus on kind of what's the status of business in the state of Texas. And as council's well aware, the control of the reopening of the economy is through the governor, through his executive order, and then amendments that are issued through what are called the Open Texas Guidelines. This slide are those businesses that currently operate in the state with no occupancy limits. In short, this is that original list that came from the federal government that was deemed to be essential. You also have religious services, local government, childcare camps, and so forth. Second category are outdoor establishments that have 50% occupancy limits. So you see the professional collegiate or similar sporting, so different than the youth sports. Pools, water parks, museums, libraries, I think, you know, of the most interest to us here in Lubbock today, amusement parks and carnivals. So those were opened through an amendment to the Open Texas Guidelines. Indoor establishments, there are several that now operate not on occupancy but on social distancing only. You see a list of those in front of you today. And council, each of you has this presentation available in your email as well. There are still a few that operate at a 50% occupancy limit. You have several of those. I think of also, high interest to us here in Lubbock, and we're beginning to get numerous questions, are outdoor gatherings that are estimated to have more than 500 people. In those cases, the judge or the mayor, so in our case, within our city limits, the mayor, in consult with the local public health authority, and that's Dr. Ron Cook, may impose necessary restrictions for that. Also note that at the end of this week, your restaurants, these are restaurants that do not have the 51% sign, those restaurants can take their occupancy up to 75%. So that's moving back up certainly in the correct direction. There are a small number of industry categories that specifically remain closed, and they remain closed by the governor's order, and again, the Open Texas Guidelines. You see those here. Nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living, and long-term care facilities. So we presume at some point the governor will begin to open those. I would expect that to be done with some steps, because recall that this is where the most severe outbreaks occurred all across the state, and these facilities are the most tightly-controlled that we have right now. Just real quick, a couple of facts and figures on what's going on in the city, what Mr. Mouty and his team are doing. The EOC opened in March. While we've been open, looking at the public health emergency, there have been seven additional activations that were run simultaneous in some cases, but not all. Five for weather events. One of those occurred last Thursday night, Friday morning, and then two different demonstrations that the EOC was stood up for. We're over 31,000 man-hours into this. Joe and his team, since the middle of March, have provided just under 5 million individual pieces of personal protective equipment, and that is our staff managing the request, our staff doing the receiving, and our staff doing the distribution. As of the end of last week, we'd been 31 press conferences or video press conferences. We stood up and did nearly 3,000 phone calls through our overflow call center. If you'll recall, that was staffed by representatives of your fire department. As it continued, we had civic center staff, community development staff, and many others. So they all did a great job with that. The most recent new event that's related to the public health emergency was the directive by the state of Texas to test every nursing home resident and every nursing home employee throughout the state. Now, there were a couple of facilities in Lubbock that because of prior concerns, we had been doing ongoing testing, and they didn't have to redo it. But when you take the remainder of the others, plus one that was not within the city limits of Lubbock, your Lubbock Fire Rescue Staff, and this was a team of up to 15 people, we've done just under 1,300 test collections. It's about your fire department working cooperatively. We did not go to any facility. We had them ask. If they wished us to be there, we did, and all of them did do that. So just under 1,300 tests, there was another round of testing conducted today. So that number's a little bigger, but really proud of Chief Folgerson and his team for doing that. With that, I'm going to pause kind of on the Trivial Pursuit version of this, and Ms. Murphy is going to start us into what I think we're all here for, as I'm disconnecting and she's getting set up. Karen's going to talk about a sequence of programs that we wish to present to the council. As we go through work session, we're looking for your feedback. We're looking for your input. The final item that's on your agenda today is item 8.15, and that is an opportunity, should the council choose, to approve these programs. Quick background, these programs come through the CRF grant that you approved. If you'll recall, our allocation's a little over 14 million. You have 3.5 million of that that can be used for direct assistance. The programs we'll show you today total 3 million. So we are holding a small amount back as we see these programs roll. So with that, Karen, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. Just want to jump right into the programs that we're looking at. As Mr. Atkinson was talking about, we have the four programs.
Ms. Murphy, do me a favor, pull the microphone towards you, please, ma'am.
Sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
And the four programs that community development will be overseeing is the rental assistance, utility assistance, and the mortgage loan assistance, and then also childcare. These are affected financially, individuals or families that are affected financially by COVID-19, and we're looking at it up to three months of assistance. And we're doing outreach through our media, direct contact with public and private agencies and professional housing organizations, and also our community housing organizations. Request for assistance is being taken, during the intake, from community development staff. So all 12 of our staff, including myself, will be carrying out application process for rental, utility, and mortgage assistance. Applications are available online by picking up at our offices with social distancing, and then mail and email. We receive and evaluate and review all of the documentation and acquiring information that we, with our application and all of the backup information. We identify the amount of assistance, and then we submit that completed request for assistance to the designated nonprofits that we're partnering with on this, on these programs. The first one is rental assistance. So we would follow the application process, CD, the department would do that. And then the supporting documentation, along with the W-9, and payment information is forwarded bi-weekly to the neighborhood house. They will evaluate from there, contact the landlord or a management company, and make payment directly to them. And then they will request a reimbursement from us, and we'll pay that out on a monthly basis. Utility is basically the same. Supporting documentation for payment processing will be forwarded bi-weekly to neighborhood house. Neighborhood house will make the payments directly to the utility providers, and then they'll request on a monthly basis. These are, this is a type of process that we're very familiar with because we do this with all of our subrecipients, and neighborhood house is one of those with the CIAP program. Mortgage assistance is a little different. This will be same application process with CD, but we also will be partnering with Lubbock Housing Finance Corp. That's Sherry Flynn is the CEO. She will actually take over from there and evaluate the loan and correspond with all the lenders. And then, of course, we'll have a release from that homeowner with all, that we will be able to contact that mortgage, our lender, to be able to discuss their loan with them. And then they'll make a payment directly to the lending institution, and then, of course, then they'll do the reimbursement on a monthly basis. Childcare's a little different. YWCA will be overseeing all of those referrals, so she will be working with, she'll be able to pay for childcare in all of the YWCA facilities, but also she'll be taking referrals from other licensed daycare centers that they'll know that those, an individual might need assistance with childcare, so that through a voucher process, she will pay directly to the childcare, and then we'll reimburse one lump sum on a monthly basis to YWCA. And then the micro grant program is, Mr. Atkinson will give you that information. Do you have any questions? I went through them really fast. I'm sorry.
Let's go to Ms. Joy. It's going to Ms. Joy first.
Ms. Murphy, you indicated that on this assistance with rent, mortgages, that sort of thing, for three months. Then what?
Yes.
Then what?
We're hoping that they'll be able to stabilize. We're actually talking to them if they can, because we're also asking if they need utility assistance and anything else like that. And then what, we're hoping that they're able to go back to work or have other assistance.
And that other assistance would.
It could possibly be they could come back and reapply if they're still, if we still have funding available, and if they have another issue that they aren't able to go back to work, if there's, if something else happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll add just briefly, and of course, Karen and her staff, Mr. Howard, really moved very quickly to set this up. Each of those four programs that she's just carried you through, staff will propose to you in your action item to not, that those have $500,000 each. So 500 for childcare, 500 for rent, for utility, for mortgage. The resolution that will be presented also carries with it the ability for us, for staff, if need be, to move dollars between those categories. So if, for instance, one was fully subscribed and moving very quickly, and another was not, rather than leave those dollars sit or have to stop and wait for the next sequence of council meetings, we would transfer within those existing dollars, not the extra 500 we're holding, just within what we're asking you to approve to not. You might notice some familiarity with those four programs. These largely exist already inside your community development department, and they have received through the federal, through HUD, they have received other dollars as well. So we're going to use this, much like we did when the knee lift program was created, to try to catch those that, for whatever other reason, couldn't get inside those existing funding pots. This gives us flexibility. This gives us speed. And if need be, if each of the four doesn't fully subscribe, the ability to move the dollars to keep trying to meet whatever becomes the most pressing need. And we don't know which that is at the moment. So any questions on that before we jump into the micro grants?
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I'm curious as to what the response has been with regard to utility assistance and rental assistance, since we've started that, because we began that with a home, using those home dollars to take care of that. What is the response been since that, the onset of the program?
We have approximately 75 applications in various positions right now. It's been pretty fast and furious, but we've, we're coming up with processes and working out the kinks. So when we do get this next round of funding coming through, then we'll be able to pretty much, we've, I think we've, I think we've determined where the gaps are. The only one that we don't know how that's going to look is the mortgage lending or assistance, because we've never done that before. But I'm going to be taking, I'm actually going to be taking those applications and working very closely with Sherry Flynn, so everybody else can do the utility.
So you're saying we've had 75?
That's just for rental assistance. Yes, ma'am.
Is that low, I would think?
Not necessarily, because we're, everybody's trying to kind of think this through of, are they truly, I guess they're not sure if they've been affected by COVID, so we're kind of looking directly affected by COVID. So I think, once we get more, I think there, it's the normal citizens that are used to this process. They're already looking at it. I think once we get more information out and do the PSAs, as we've talked about, and contacting more of the professional organizations like Lubbock Apartment Association, Lubbock Board of Realtors, those kind of things, I think we'll have more of those.
That's my deal, is that I want to know what we're doing to make sure we get the word out, so that those people who are not familiar with the system, aren't afraid to come and be, to make application for the funds that are available. I was just envisioning that tons of people would, of course, come and be asking. I want us to.
That's just applications that we have on our desk. That's not counting all the people we haven't called. That's not counting all the people we haven't called back. I don't have that number with me.
Oh, okay, okay.
And but also, the landlords are starting to connect with us, too. So it's, I think the more the landlords understand, or the management companies, when they're getting clearance from their owners, or like the management companies can't just start asking for that. So we're, I think we'll hear, in the next two weeks, I believe, we'll see a lot more.
Have we reached out to some of those landlords who have quite a few number of action-
The house, house units, houses within communities? Yes, ma'am.
Like I said, I just envision a whole bunch of folk really being in need of this, and I don't want to miss the opportunity to blow this, blow the roof off this joker, if you allow me to say it like that. I don't want to offend nobody. But I, I do, I want us to do that, because there are people out there. I want to make sure, I watch, and I try to share as much information as I can to the folks, you know, who have, who follow me, I don't know why sometimes, but who follow me on Facebook, and I just want to make sure that we do that. I'm not finding it on all of the other Facebooks or social medias that the city has. And I think that if we're not doing that, that we could possibly be missing some opportunities. So just, I'm going to take that and sit that right there, and we can just do with it what we will. I think that we can do a bigger job of getting this information out. I don't want it to be on our end, that for the lack of people, you know, not knowing about what we're trying to do, is my biggest deal. I just envision that, you know, that we would help so many people, because I hear of it myself. So that's my concern. I just want us to make sure we're reaching and providing that information.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, Ms. Patterson-Harris, you're on the, you're on the right page, because I, I believe that some of the, the dollars that run through HUD normally have more restrictions.
Yes, sir.
For instance, if you're trying to get rental assistance, but you've got lead-based paint, lead-based paint, you can't get it. With these CARES dollars, it's much more, it's wide open. And, and so, a big part of our efforts got to be communication. I think you're, I think you're right on it. Mr. Atkinson, do you want to add to that?
I agree, Mayor. The way the CARES Act, Coronavirus Relief Fund, was written, it was very much designed to go quickly and to get dollars where they need to go in a fashion that's quicker and better than what the other existing government programs are. So we will absolutely push much harder on our communications effort. You'll hear a little bit about some targeted ones here in just a moment. We will certainly do that.
Okay. Anything for Ms. Murphy? Are you going to take this, you going to go a step further with this?
Mayor, with your permission, I'll walk through the microgrant program.
Let's do that. So we've got that slide up. Do you want to, you going to walk it, use this slide?
Yes.
Okay. I know that you sent us a, you sent us even more detail in a Word document today. You're not going to use that, though. Is that correct?
I will refer to that for some of the details.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly to ask the council a couple of questions as we go through.
I'm going to be Vanna for him.
You're going to be Vanna? You're going to move the slides? Okay, good.
This is Vanna Murphy. We'll, we'll stay here and help us now. Help me. Okay, so the final program that we bring to you tonight, so program number five is a microgrant program, and it means exactly what it says. This is not a zero-interest loan, it's not a forgivable loan. The program that we bring to you is a grant. Want to give a lot of thanks to John Osborne and his team over at Market Lubbock, helping us get this put together. They did the heavy lifting. And in fact, Christine Allen is in the, in the audience today, and I think she really did all the hard work, and John made the phone calls, right? Absolutely. So, two categories, two categories. Category one, a sole proprietor or independent contractor. This will actually be expanded just a little bit on the application. We didn't have time to change it here. So if you have what's typically thought of as a mom and pop, and you'll, I'll show you where the cut line, I think, will help us with that. We want them to be eligible. Second category, an individual worker. And we define it only in two ways. Number one, employed as of March the 14th this year. Employed March 14th this year. And second, income was reduced or eliminated due to the public health emergency. So this is an individual that works on a booth rent, that works in a restaurant, works in any field, think of your hospitality workers, your hotel workers. And their income was reduced or eliminated due to the public health emergency. And for either of the two categories. And the maximum annual income of the worker or the revenue of that super small business is $75,000 a year or less. So this is truly trying to drive it down, and I'll show you some breakup in some tiers to try to, try to help that even more. The only final qualifier, the business needs to be in the city limits or the worker needs to live in the city limits. Okay? So we're pushing your City of Lubbock dollars back into the City of Lubbock. Funding for the, for the program, we are asking you to appropriate $1 million in this CRF grant to this funding. We propose that you establish the grants at $4,000. So if you establish $4,000, that gives us 250 grants that could be made, 250. And then the numbers just slide from there. If we drop it to 2,500, that would be 400 grants. If we go up to 5,000, it's 200. I've heard some very compelling arguments to be a little less or to be a little more. This is just what we choose to bring to you today. So I'm going to stop and ask you if we're on the right track, because we'll need to change documents later tonight. Is $4,000, that being 250 then eligible recipients, does that meet the council's goals?
Ms. Joy?
Mr. Atkinson, I think there's one other factor in this that maybe we would want people to know. As, as this is drafted, you could not have received PPP, EIDL, or federal and state unemployment benefits. So that might make a difference. I don't know. It has to mean-
Excellent point. So let me read you the detail on that one. May not have received a PPP, Paycheck Protection Program loan. EIDL loan, that is the Small Business Administration loan, and it stands for Economic Injury and Disaster Loans. We're probably better off calling it SBA. But these are the SBA loans that you heard about. Or federal or state unemployment benefits, and we do have a mechanism with our state partners to verify the unemployment benefit piece of that. So, yes, good, good, good catch.
Any other questions for Mr. Atkinson? Please continue.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So, mention that the program was set up in tiers. We're going to suggest 40%. $400,000 of that 1 million sets aside to go first to those applicants, so the business side or the individual side, that has up to $25,000 annual income or revenue. So we're pushing the biggest piece of the pie towards the bottom of the tier.
So just a little more, that'd be just a little more than $2,000 a month in income?
Yes.
Okay.
35% of the 1 million, 350,000, would go to the middle tier, 25,001 to 50,000. And the final set aside, taking us back to the total, set aside 25% for those with gross revenue or annual income from 50,001 to 75,000. And recall, 75,000 is our top, the way it's written. Program goes forward. Our partners over at Market Lubbock have done a lot of background work. There are draft applications, there's some fill-in-the-blanks based on tonight's action. They have prepared the one-pagers. They have acquired web domains to support Lubbock. They've acquired email domains to associate with those. They'll all redirect back inside of Market Lubbock, but support Lubbock. We propose to open applications tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, if this is approved by the council. There'll be a press conference held later that morning as well. All of the documents, be they social media, the applications themselves, are prepared in English and Spanish. We will be asking council members to help us with some short PSA shots. And I've had a, I know one's been done, and I've had a chance to talk to some others. Open the window June 10, 8:00 AM. Close the window June 16, 5:00 PM. At that point, a couple of things will happen behind the curtain. The applications will be divided into their proper stacks. Is this the business side or the individual side? The applications will be verified. Do they meet the qualifications or they complete? Those that are within each of those two stacks then are going to be randomized. So you'll just, it's kind of the, the draw the bingo number. That will then come back to the city, actually, to Ms. Murphy and her team. And you will have a list that says, here's the first one in this pile, the second, third, fourth, fifth, and we will begin to disburse those checks. Those checks could be dispersed within 48 hours of closing this application process. We tried to look at it first come, first served. That's got some merit, it's got some challenges. One of the ways was doing it this way, where we take everybody that got in within the window and then randomize it. There will be those that are looking at the other four programs you've just discussed, who could be eligible for this, but they may not know that tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. This gives a chance for those also to get back into the stack and to have this opportunity. So with that, I do have a little more specific detail if needed. Again, you'll see this later tonight. We do have the ability, if needed, to move money from one of these categories to the other, but not to exceed the money that we're asking you to approve. So Mayor, with that, I'll stop and take questions.
So, Mr. Atkinson, it, it, there could be a scenario where, let's say, the, the grant program, the microgrant program ran through the million dollars, and it, and maybe one of the others did not. You, you have the flexibility to restart it again after the 16th, or maybe a couple of days later. You, you would not have to wait till the 23rd to restart that, right?
Not if we stay within the 3 million total that's going to be in front of you tonight. I can't go over that.
Okay. All right. Counsel, Ms. Joy, I just want to, for Ms. Joy, for our yield to her, I want to thank her for helping Mr. Atkinson and me, along with Ms. Murphy and Mr. Howerton, sort of work through this. We, this is a, something we've been working on for the last three, four, three or four workdays, and very excited to be able to present it to you guys today. Okay, Ms. Joy?
I just wanted you to clarify on the funding source and, you know, how, you know, is it, do we get reimbursed for doing this? How does it work with the CARES Act?
Okay, good, good, good question. So in round numbers, you have three and a half million dollars that under the present CRF rules are available for these five programs. They're available for other things, too, but for these five type activities, you have three and a half million dollars. We have taken 500 off the top and set it off to the side. And that's if we need to come back. We've got, we've run right through it, there's a different opportunity. You're still holding that 500 in the reserve on that. As far as dollars in hand, there's 2.8 million dollars that were deposited when we approved the grant at your prior meeting. You ratified our acceptance, so that's 2.8 million dollars. A million, a little over a million dollars of that is spent. So that takes you down to the 1.8. You have a budget amendment on tonight's agenda. As part of that budget amendment, we're asking you to take 1.2 million, so 1.8, 1.2, we're back to the three. We're asking you to take 1.2 million from your general fund reserve and give it to this program. Because the way the CRF works through the state of Texas is this. Once we go past the 2.8, the cash on hand, I have to spend a city dollar and ask for it to be reimbursed. So spend 1.2, reimburse 1.2. And your budget amendment's carefully styled that we're asking for that 1.2 on a reimbursable basis. It's not gone. I just, if we don't spend it, we can't get it back. It's, it's an unusual way of doing it.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'll say, I'm going to share this, because I'm not afraid. I'm sitting over here thinking, are they going to give us our money back? That's just me over here thinking. But my biggest, what I want to clarify, and I'm just seeing probably what others are thinking. But with regard to the grant program, we're saying sole proprietor or independent contractor. But when you were stating, you said individuals who are maybe just part of the working force. Help me with that one.
Okay, if they're, if they're a member of the workforce, they're going to come in as the individual. If instead, maybe it is set up as a small LLC, you know, sole proprietor, and I didn't get it in the presentation, we were still tweaking on that at about 11:30 this morning. Think instead more to using that $75,000 gross revenue as the cutoff, not, not the particular unique legal structure.
I think that you, I think she asked a great question, because some of these people could have lost their job for a period of time and now been called back to work, but this still benefits them. It benefits a lady who cut hair or a man who cut hair, who is now back at work, but has those bills that, you know, this was none of their, this was not of their doing. And so, that, that's why this, once again, it's about education and awareness to make sure that people get these funds. These are appropriated by the federal government. We're all going to pay for this. We need to make sure our people that were impacted, people that are impacted need their money.
And if I might just add, they had to have been employed as of March the 14th. They do not necessarily have to have become unemployed.
That's right.
Nor do they necessarily have to be still unemployed if they did become employed. They may have gone back to work. Their qualifier is that certification that their income was reduced or eliminated because of the public health emergency.
And this doesn't cover someone if they opened a business after that point in time?
That, that is correct. They, they had to have been in, if they're coming in on the business category, they had to have been in business 2019.
Other questions on this, counsel? We're going to be asked to, this is, this is on our agenda tonight to, to, to consider. Okay, everybody's, everybody's good with this? Okay, Ms. Murphy, thank you. Mr. Atkinson, good work. Appreciate you. Item 24 is just a quick item to review the, the local state of disaster. That just doesn't sound right, but anyway. It's a, as, as you know, since our, since early March, every time we've met, we've considered either a new disaster declaration or continuing one that's in place. I'll try to get this right, and Mr. Weaver, you help me if I, if I don't have it correctly. But the item that our most, the disaster declaration we have on today that was considered and passed at our meeting, the second meeting in May, it will stay in effect until December 31st of this year, unless we choose to make a change to it. I don't believe staff feels like or is recommending any changes to it. And I'll open the floor, counsel, for any discussion among you if you think there's something that needs to be added to it. Otherwise, it's just, it's just here to, to make sure we have a chance to discuss it. It's actually on our agenda, is item 8.1. If we don't take action tonight on 8.1, it stays as approved, as in effect today, as approved at our second meeting in May. Okay, is that clear? Mr. Atkinson, do you want to add to that? You look like you had something to say.
You're absolutely correct. This item will, will remain on each posted agenda between here and the end of December. It does not require action unless the council wishes to change the declaration.
Okay, I'll see you in discussion. Counsel, I don't believe we've got any, I'm moving to wrap up work session. I, I don't believe we have any polls for the meeting tonight. Is, is that correct? I looked to my left and my right, both, and no polls? Okay. All right, so we will hold executive session today with, for the purpose of consulting with staff regarding- with staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements, and so consultation with attorney under section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code. Also to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property under section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two of the Texas Government Code. And finally, to discuss personnel matters under section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of the Texas Government Code. It is three oh one PM. Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Good evening. It's four forty-one. Lubbock City Council will come to order. We are back from executive session and we will gavel into, or we will begin our regular session at five PM. Thank you for being with us to, today. Today is June the ninth, two thousand and twenty. It's the regularly scheduled meeting of the Lubbock City Council. We'll begin tonight with an invocation followed by the pledges. Tonight's invocation is led by Pastor Dan Borkenhagen. Pastor Borkenhagen is the, is at Luther, Hope Lutheran Church. And so we're pleased that he's here this evening to open with a word of prayer. Following the prayer, the Mayor pro tem will lead us in the pledges. If everyone would please stand.
Feels weird to sit here with people all around me. I'm not used to my congregation being all around me, but I'll try to do my best here. So.
If you'd prefer not to look at us, which might be a good decision, you can, you can look at that group.
No, I'll, I'll just do my best. I'll kind of circulate here, all right? I thought I'd do a short reading from Romans thirteen. I don't know if that's the pastor's favorite one here. The Bible doesn't have a whole lot of words about directly relation to authority, but this is one of them. The poll writes, "Everyone must submit himself to the governing authorities, for there's no authority except that which God has established. The authorities that exist have been established by God. Consequently, he rebels against that authority, is rebelling against what God has instituted, and those who do so will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. Do you want to be free from the one, the terror of the one authority? Then do what is right, and he will commend you, for he is God's servant to do you good." This is why you pay taxes. "For the authorities are God's servants, who give their full time to governing, give everyone what you owe them. If you owe taxes, pay taxes; if revenue, then revenue; if respect, then respect; if honor, then honor." Shows this text tonight because, well, again, it's one of the few words that, that Paul speaks directly to the issue of relationship between people and within their governing authorities, but especially, I think it's kind of timely in terms of a time when there's tension between people and our governing authorities here. And here's where there might be a little Lutheran distinction that I'll bring out here, all right? So Martin Luther, the father of the kind of Lutheran distinguishing, said that we don't just talk about what God says, but also kind of about the inverse of things. So when God says in the commandment, "You shall not murder," he also means, "You shall care for your neighbor in every single bodily need." It's not just what you don't do, it's also what you're supposed to do. And so there's a word here for what our relationship should be with our governing authorities, that we should do right by them, we should respect and honor them, and then it also means that that respect and honor should come back to the people. That we have no fear of our authorities because they should love and cherish and support us, not just by stopping from us from doing what's wrong, but also by doing and caring for us as we do what is right and good as a civil society. So I just thought I would hold that up tonight as we sit here and blessed to be in this assembly right here, where we have our public servants and our public to govern alongside each other. And that's one of the beautiful things about this room, is that we're gathering tonight to work alongside each other. So let's say a prayer for that process tonight. Lord God and Heavenly Father, we thank you so much that you gather us together this evening as servants together, public servants, civil servants, as the public itself, all appointed by you to care for the neighbor. So Lord, I pray that you would guide the conversations tonight, that you let us speak with wisdom and love and tolerance, respect and honor for each other on both sides of this room this evening. God bless that. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Will you please join us in the pledges of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you.
You may be seated. Pastor Dan, I, I liked your, your, both your prayer and your, yeah, sermonette? Yeah, no, that's not, no, that's not a sermon. That's, that, that's not a sermon. Bill Stubblefield right behind you. Yeah, I had to call Bill last week for, and had to call Bill Stubblefield, Bill Watson, back to back. And I called Watson about ten minutes later, he goes, "I know, I know, you had Stubblefield before me." I go, "You got it." So, Dan, thank you for being here. Thanks for blessing us with that. We, we very much appreciate it. Next on our agenda tonight is board recognition. And I think Mr. Chytus is going to help us with that this evening. We're tonight recognizing members of our Community Development and Services Board. And I want to spend just a minute and remind the community that we have re, this board has been reconstituted, not because the board previously wasn't functioning, but just by, because some changes to state law that require us, had required us to make some changes, including some of these members being elected from within the population they serve, including some being elected officials that we could, that could then be appointed, other elected officials that could be appointed to serve. And so we've got quite a, quite a cadre of, I'm echoing, I don't know where that's coming from. That's bad, I like to talk. But we've got quite a group that we'll be recognizing tonight. So Mr. Chytus, with no further ado, would you please take it away?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, let's, Roxanne and Sarah. Come on up, ma'am. Sounds like a game show. Nitra Barnes. Thank you, ma'am. Leo Flores. Gilbert Flores, Commissioner. Peter Gamble. Come on up, ma'am. Gracie Gomez. And last but not least, our friend and brother, Stubblefield. Come on up. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here, for volunteering, which is what we need. We've got about forty-eight commissions and boards out there. And we've got pretty much one board amongst all the public, we've got boards that probably would fit anybody's criteria. If it's a matter of working days, we've got boards that meet at night. If you work nights, we've got boards that meet during the day. These boards make a lot of decisions. They make a lot of recommendations to us on the, on, on, on the dice. A lot of decisions are made from what these boards and commissions suggest and recommend for us. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for volunteering. I will not read each and every one of them. The only difference here, of course, obviously, will be the name. And I will leave the name out. It says, "The City of Lubbock, Texas. Greetings. The members of the City Council reposing special trust in the integrity," and this is for Roxanne and Sarah, "hereby appoint to the Community Development and Service Board to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity. Confirm this ninth day of June, two thousand and twenty." And it's signed by the mayor and the city council. Thank you all. Thank you. Petra? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Gomez? Gracie, thank you. You left out again?
Are you joking with him or is he not?
No, I'm serious.
Check's in the mail, Bill, we'll get it to you.
We will get you, and I promise. I, my apologies. We're not that we're leaving you out, we just clerical error, whatever you want to blame it on.
Well, budget passed.
So this has never happened before, but it couldn't happen to a better person. Thank you all very much.
Abby may be bringing it in right here, you never know. But let's, let's get a picture. We want to do this in socially distancing appropriately. We're trying to set a decent, a good example here, so we may need to do this in, in, maybe, you want to break it up, Alicia? Let's do it in two groups, okay? Why, we want you in both groups, so you decide how you want to do this.
This is good?
Bill, get it, Bill, get it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's shift to the other side.
Six baby feet. One, two, three.
Thank you for serving. One thing we can guarantee you about this board is you will work. It's, there's a lot of work to do, and, and I know you'll work closely with Ms. Murphy and Mr. Howerton and, and their team, and so we're, we're thankful for all of you. Thanks for being willing to serve. Okay, Counsel, let's, if it's okay with you, let's, let's go ahead and get, let's go ahead and gavel, let's go ahead and gavel in our meeting at four fifty-three, call our meeting to order. If it's okay with you, we'll skip down to the, to item six, our minutes. Are you okay with that? Go, go to item six? Our agenda this week includes minutes from the April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty special city council meeting at the Electric Utility Board and the May twelfth, two thousand and twenty regular city council meeting. Counsel, to begin discussion, is there a motion?
Both to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, thank you, Mr. Chytus. Counsel, are there additions, pardon me, additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the April twenty-first special city council meeting, the May twelfth regular city council meeting, please say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed by that very same sign. Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Trying to see if there's anything else we can take care of before, before we, it wouldn't require any public comment. I might mention on item eight-one, item eight-one is a resolution from the Council. It's, it's a consider resolution continuing and affirming the mayor's declaration of disaster regarding COVID-nineteen pandemic. We, those of you that have followed our business closely know that we've been issuing and updating these since early March. At our last meeting, the, the one we put in place actually will carry us through the end of the year. We will, we will continue to post this if we need to make an addition to it, if the governor were to say something or something to become clear that we would, where we would need to make a change to our, to our, to that order. But we will not be considering it tonight because the Council, we, we had a chance to discuss this in work session today, and we, we have no, no need to, to, to address that this evening. I'll also just let you know that when we get to the regular agenda tonight, and we have no pulls on, on our consent agenda, so we'll get to the regular agenda relatively quickly. Item eight-three is a, is the only public hearing we'll have tonight, which is a welcome break because we've been having a lot of public hearings lately. We did planning items in back-to-back meetings, which is a little unusual, but tonight, the public hearing will be about the downtown master plan. So it will, you see, some of you have seen this before, but we will be considering that this evening, and we'll see a, see a presentation before the public hearing. We will now stay in our seats, but take a three-minute recess until five o'clock. At such time, we will open our meeting with citizen comments. So we are in a, city council's in a very brief recess. So not, you know, we some, we make a mistake, but we. Now, just drew one up real quick for you.
It was intentional, it was no accident.
I'm glad I'm worth the budget.
Okay, it's five o'clock. Lubbock City Council's back in regular session. We had no one sign up in citizen comments this evening, so we will move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda begins tonight on page sixty-six. Consent, consent agenda items are considered to be routine. The consent agenda begins tonight on page 66. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and are acted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council or a council member desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. This evening, we do not have any pulls from the consent agenda. So I'll open the floor for a motion to consider the consent agenda. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to approve the consent agenda in full.
Got a motion in a second. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposed by that same sign? Thank you very much. The consent agenda passes. It's approved, seven to zero. Okay, we'll move now to item 8.2, as we indicated previously, we will not consider 8.1 tonight. Item 8.2 is on page 238. It's a budget amendment from our finance department. To begin the discussion, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Chides. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kostlich, our chief financial officer for the city, will walk you through budget amendment number 27. Would remind counsel, one of the items contained within is the 1.2 million that is actually related to item 8.15. So, Mr. Kostlich, if you would.
Mr. Kostlich, do you have a presentation?
I do, sir.
You do? One moment. All right, you should be up shortly. Okay, thank you. Please, good evening, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening. Mayor, counsel, budget amendment 27 asks the council to approve and appropriate grant funding, appropriate some general fund reserves on a reimbursement basis, and adds full-time, grant-funded, full-time equivalent positions to our public health department. So that's what we're doing tonight in this budget amendment. This is a little bit different because normally a budget amendment goes on our consent agenda because it is considered a routine and requires two reads. This one tonight is on regular session, and it only requires one read because this is directly related to the declared disaster, the public health emergency. So tonight, I'm going to walk you through what's in this budget amendment very, very briefly. So first and foremost is the $14,113,000 allotment from the CARES Act CRF funding. That's federal money that transitioned, went through the state. Texas Division of Emergency Management is handling that program. To date, we have received the $2,822,600. This is where, as Mr. Atkinson was saying, we're also asking you to appropriate $1.2 million of our general fund reserve to support a program that we'll bring back to you in item 8.15 that is reimbursable through the CRF funds. All of the remaining funds, everything up to that $14.1 million, will be on a reimbursement basis. So as we spend the dollars related to this pandemic, we'll request the reimbursement from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, or TDEM. So next is $696,000 for the Community Health Workers Grant. All of these are going to be through the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. This one requires, as you'll see, a match of $34,800. We have one full-time employee that's paid out of the general fund, and that employee's salary in public health will be able to go towards this local match. So that's how we're going to fund the local match portion on this one. We have $500,000 coming in for the Administrative Substance Use Disorder Services Grant. That does not have any match tied to it. 2.3 million for the Treatment Adult Services Grant. This requires a local match of $114,084. And what you'll see in parentheses is passed through. And what we're talking about on that is the subcontractors that we have that will be administering this, the contracts that we have with those subs, is a fee for service. So the way that those local matches are going to be done is basically when those subs have their customary rates, they're going to be charging a little bit less than whatever. So say, a fee for their service was $50, but they're going to charge $40 for this, that $10 would go towards the local match portion. So that's how the local matches are going to work on all of these treatment grants that you'll see following. So $114,161 for the Treatment of Youth Services Grants with the local match of $5,708. Just shy of $1.2 million for the Treatment of Adult Specialized Female Grant, local match of $58,088. And $159,400 for the Co-Occurring Psychiatric and Substance Use Disorders Grant with the local match of $7,970. Finally, on this budget amendment, we're asking you to amend the authorized personnel for your public health department by increasing by seven full-time employees. These are all grant-funded through the grants we just discussed. Five positions are going to be through the Community Health Workers Grant. Two positions are funded by the Substance Use Disorders Grant. So that includes one lead case manager, three case managers, two health promotion workers, and one financial project manager. With that, Mayor and counsel, we hope to take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kostlich. Counsel, questions for Mr. Kostlich? Okay, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Counsel, is there discussion on this item? Ms. Patterson-Harris, I'm sorry.
It may not be a question for him to answer for me, but maybe Ms. Catherine can ask me. I'm just curious about the positions from those grant funds to see if we've started.
Wow, the great Catherine Wells live and not on Zoom. How about that?
That's the Catherine Wells. I'm just curious, when will we put out the information that we're hiring for those positions? Do we have a waiting time? Talk to me about that.
If the budget amendment is approved tonight, we will be bringing you the contracts for signature at the next council meeting with the hope of being able to start all of these programs July 1st.
Good. I'm excited about them. I just kind of wanted to know the process and the time so that we don't have to wait too, too long to get folks in these so we can begin doing the work that these positions will be doing.
Start dates July 1st with the state on all of these grants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Ms. Wells, this $500,000 for the substance abuse grant, can you tell us how that came about and what necessitated that we get into that position?
Yes, back in July of last year, managed care centers for addictive disorders shut down. And when that happened, all of the grant funding that paid for substance use services for individuals without insurance went away. At that time, I started discussions with Texas Department of Health and Human Services about how we could return that funding to Lubbock. They did not have a contractor that was willing to take on those services. What we ended up doing was negotiating the $500,000 grant to pay for the additional city staff with the agreement that all of the treatment dollars would be passed through at the full reimbursement rate from the state to any local provider who wants to join our provider network. So essentially, this will allow individuals to come into the health department who need substance use disorder services or treatment. We can make them eligible for that program, and then we will put them in with a private provider or a nonprofit or one of the educational centers to receive that treatment service. So hopefully, they'll be able to receive the same level of care as somebody with insurance.
Will that be effective July 1st as well?
Yes, it will. It's going to take a couple of months to get the contracts in place with the subs. So the first goal is to get the state funding in place, and then we'll have to be putting out RFPs for people to join our network. I hope we'll actually get people in services September 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any further questions for Ms. Wells or Mr. Kostlich? Thank you very much. Appreciate. Thanks, Catherine. Okay, counsel, any discussion on the dice? Got a motion on the floor, motion and a second to approve item 8.2. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, our next item is item 8.3. 8.3 is on page 243. We're going to have a public hearing on the updated downtown master plan. However, before we do that, we are going to have a brief presentation by our Director of Business Development, Brianna Girardi. Mr. Atkinson, do you have any comments before we, looks like you do. Mr. Atkinson?
No, sir, no comments.
You're good. Ms. Girardi?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Ms. Girardi, pull that microphone down a little closer to you there. There you go, please. Thank you.
Better?
You're good, yes.
Excited to be here with you tonight. I'm happy to see this item on our regular agenda and not in work session. I know it's been a labor of love by a lot of people in this room, so I'm very happy to be with you all to talk about it tonight. I want to start out just with a couple of thank yous. This is a process that started for us in August of last year, and the first four months of this process involved a lot of input from the public. So just want to take an opportunity to say thank you to those that participated in this process, especially our downtown stakeholders that provided invaluable input. And then we also have Mont McLendon representing our master developers with us today. He's been my right hand and left hand throughout this process, so very appreciative of him. And then we also have a couple of members of our Central Business District TIF board, so appreciate them being here tonight as well. This is a slide you've seen before. I won't spend a lot of time talking about how we got here, but as I mentioned, we started this process last summer. We spent the fall and winter going through a series of workshops where we met with Overland Partners and their team of consultants to really focus on five key areas for looking at a redesign of our downtown master plan. Those areas you can see here, utilities and infrastructure, parks and open space, traffic and parking, catalytic development opportunities, both ones that we had already identified and maybe some that we hadn't yet identified, and then building a cohesive design that builds upon previous studies of downtown revitalization. So really taking previous master plans that had been done for downtown, our planning and zoning codes, our building codes, and then looking at how to bring those into one cohesive document. And again, we did that over the course of four workshops. The results of that plan were presented to you in January, and then, as you know, we've had a series of conversations regarding the recommendations from the master plan since then, and I'm excited to talk through some of those today. In your board packets, you should have what I'm referring to as the Consolidated Implementation Matrix. This is really, when we originally looked at the downtown master plan, you received three documents, the master plan itself and two appendix documents. And what we've done to build this consolidated matrix is take all of the recommendations through all of those three documents and put them into one master matrix, which I've included for you tonight. And this will really be the part of the master plan that is living. Our CBD TIF board has created a subcommittee, a master plan subcommittee, that will be tasked with updating and maintaining this matrix, making changes to timing on implementation, priority on implementation as we receive direction from you all. But just wanted to point out here that while we are approving Overland's master plan, there is a very large component of this that will still live and change as we receive direction from you and our downtown lives and changes. A lot of that is going to be driven, as you'll see in this paragraph here, by budgetary appropriations. But we've also put the burden of management on the CBD's master plan subcommittee, their board. As we see opportunities or needs to make changes to the timing on this matrix, we will make those recommendations and bring them to you. It is our plan, both staff and the master developers' plan, to update this matrix or update you on our implementation of this matrix on a quarterly basis, but we will, at a minimum, do an annual review after budget season every year.
Counsel, just to, I know you may have memorized all 600 of Ms. Girardi's pages tonight, but it looks like that implementation matrix begins on page 801, if you're looking for it.
Any questions on this before we, I'm going to kind of do a deep dive into the matrix.
Good. I saw you called it out. I just want to make sure. Any questions before we go to the, I know we were briefed on this, what, last meeting in work session? Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith, I know you had mentioned a question. Did you get your question answered?
We can come to it later.
As we talk about implementation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, please continue.
This slide was in the presentation that we looked at in work session at our last meeting, but I did want to point out, so the categories within the implementation matrix are listed here. And there is a reason for the order. So the master plan subcommittee took all of the recommendation categories out of the master plan that we received from Overland and put those in their suggested priority order. And I'll kind of explain the reasons for some of that as we go through, but just wanted you to know that there is a reason that these categories are in the order that they're in, and they're also in your implementation matrix in that order as well. We are making an assumption that Phase 1 of the master plan is a one-to-three-year phase that would begin with fiscal year 2020, 2021. And so, of course, we know that there will likely be some impacts to our budget due to COVID-19 and some of the economic impacts that we've had this year. But that is the assumption that we're making going through this implementation matrix, is that we'll be starting this following this year's budget. So the first step that the master plan subcommittee wanted us to focus on was policy and regulatory frameworks. And there's, the Overland plan recommends three phases. I've really just highlighted what we would recommend that we look at in those first three years. But if you have questions on the other phases as you're looking through your matrix, I'd be happy to answer those as well. One of the things to note, and the main reason that they've put policy and regulatory first, is there are some recommendations that are within the master plan that are, we wouldn't be able to do them today even if we wanted to because some of our policies and ordinances would prohibit it. And so that's really, you know, as we talked about in work session last two weeks ago, and we'll be talking about in work session two weeks from now, there are some policy changes that we could make immediately that would really open up our ability to implement some of these recommendations. But today, they're prohibitive. So that's the reason you'll see this as the top priority.
Those could include things like decision around Brick Streets or.
Lighting, pedestrian lighting.
Lighting, vacancy ordinance, those type.
Parking ratios. Yes, several things like that. And that will be the first thing that you will see from staff once this is approved in two weeks from now, are some recommendations on those policies. We are also, it's important to note on this slide that our consultants worked very closely in their process with the consultants that are overseeing the Unified Development Code, and they will continue to do that. The UDC consultants have a copy of our plan. They will be implementing our plan into theirs so that we continue to have one cohesive plan, in this case, specific to downtown, but citywide. One of the key recommendations that came out regarding development services was identifying dedicated city staff. So the consultants highly recommended that we create a user-friendly experience for downtown, and so that is something that I will be working very closely with our internal development services departments to figure out what that might look like and how to better serve our stakeholders in the downtown. The next recommendation was in regards to streets, and you'll notice in your matrix that there are several pages of recommendations regarding streets. This was a. This was a key recommendation that came out of the plan. And there's a lot of recommendations around streets that are not just aesthetic. There are recommendations around looking at our utilities and how to better utilize our infrastructure, how to make our downtown safer, how to make it more walkable. There's several things that we talk about when we look at streets. The first thing you'll see here is to transform the public realm into a vibrant, walkable environment. Their recommendation, Overland's recommendation, was to focus on the Broadway Corridor in our first phase, but they recommended five key corridors throughout the three phases of the master plan that we should really focus our investment on. One of the things I will note on this slide, you'll see the convert one-way to two-way streets. Just wanted to point that out, that that's included in phase one. We've talked a lot about that and are hoping that that will be one of the one of the first wins that we can see that comes out of the master plan. Next subject here is parking. I'm sure that I've said this to you every time I've done this presentation, but this is my favorite slide that came out of the downtown master plan document as it was, I don't think what any of us were expecting to see when we talked about current available parking in the downtown. But we do anticipate putting out a request for proposal for a parking master plan in the first phase of implementation to figure out how to take the existing parking that we have and utilize it better with shared parking agreements, with possibly converting some of this surface parking to developable space rather than having parking. This is where you'll see your conversion from angled to parallel parking. So there's a lot that we can do in the parking area in the first phase. Parks and open space. This was a really exciting recommendation that came out of the master plan. They recommended that we create a civic gathering space at the current location of Lubbock Power and Light. So we do anticipate considering the opportunity to demolish that building and put a civic park in its place. Another key recommendation that came out of this section was the Broadway underpass, which we've spent quite a bit of time talking about and staff is working on actively, but really upgrading that connective corridor between the Canyon Lake system and the downtown. Leadership and advocacy. The key takeaway here is prioritizing investment. What we, staff, really anticipate to focus on in the first three years is finding creative ways and new ways to find funding, looking outside of our CBD TIF Board and our city budget and looking possibly for grants, considering the Texas Downtown Association designation, just looking for some ways that we can capitalize on investment opportunities that are in existence. Public engagement and communication. The key takeaway here is that we need a brand for our downtown. I put several logos at the bottom of this slide to just give you a visual of the different entities that are already existing in our downtown, that are selling our downtown in different ways, that we, what we need to be looking at is how to do that collaboratively, sorry, where we're all sharing the same message, where when you see something related to downtown Lubbock, you know what it looks like, where it is, something that people get excited about. So they highly recommended a new brand for downtown Lubbock. Economic development. The recommendation for phase one was to be more intentional about attracting local investment into downtown. We're in an opportunity zone in downtown Lubbock, so really figuring out what that means and how we can leverage that to encourage development to come downtown. And then also celebrating the businesses that are already in the downtown. So if you'll remember, our consultants recommended a This Place Matters campaign where you're really telling the story of the businesses that have been in downtown for a long time, what makes them successful, why they stay down here, and really highlighting and cheerleading that. Utilities, infrastructure. We hit on a little bit with streets, but really taking a strategic look at making the downtown development ready and development friendly. One of the things that came out of this recommendation was to lift the protection of brick alleys, to open up those corridors for us to be able to bury utilities and do some things like that. Historical and cultural resources. This is another likely request for proposal that we'll see in the next three years where we would receive assistance with applications for a historical designation, both in pre-World War II era and mid-century modern era. One of our consultants did an inventory of all of the buildings in downtown and identified that those were the two key eras where we have existing buildings that could be contributing to that historical designation. So we plan to pursue that.
I think he also submitted that we would potentially be the very first mid-city modern historical district in the country. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because that's where the bulk of our businesses are at, would be after, be after World War, generally after World War II, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
Like the very building we're in right now.
I think we modified it a little bit, though.
But it's very consistent with mid-century modern. I mean, Don Draper's sitting out there in the lobby right now. So we're good, okay? Sorry, I digress. Please continue.
With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I didn't know you were at the end. There you go.
Yes.
Okay, questions for Ms. Girardi? Who wants, anybody want to go first? Mr. Griffith, you, let's go with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk about Brick Streets.
Okay.
We're asking to adopt this plan, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's done on this plan. As we know, and as you've stated, with the pandemic, our Streets Committee, which I chair, and Mr. Choddis and Mr. Christian also sit in on and collaborate very well. We have been analyzing not just our streets of the city, but obviously the Brick Streets in downtown. And from a maintenance standpoint, we will be, we know that it says in the plan to reconstruct Brick Streets with a hybrid component. There's five really, Brianna, that you're speaking of that I'd like for you to go over again, please.
Okay. Broadway is recommended for phase one. Buddy Holly Avenue and Avenue J are recommended in phase two. And Texas Avenue and Crickets are recommended in phase three.
Okay. Thank you for stating that very accurately. We feel that it's very important that people understand we respect the plan at the same time, due to maintenance and environment. We all, we know that it's possible to save dollars futuristically inside this model. And our Streets Committee will be bringing forth not a variation of this, but a recommendation to go in tandem with this later this summer when we get closer into the budget. Am I speaking properly, councilman?
Definitely are. We're all in agreement with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, to answer your question, we're in agreement.
Mr. Choddis, thank you. Mr. Christian, thank you. We just wanted to highlight that part of it, that we will have a modification to that.
And this is one of, an example of what I was talking about earlier, where we have a beautiful recommendation that if we had the funding to implement it tomorrow, we couldn't because our ordinances would prohibit it. So it's important to note, and I appreciate you bringing it up, that this plan is a roadmap, but it's not the law. And so it gives us some really great ideas. But when we look at streets specifically in the Broadway Corridor, this would still require a street study, both what you see above the ground and what's existing under the ground before we could really determine, A, what we can afford to do, and B, what we want to do and what fits Lubbock. So these are, these are beautiful ideas, but they're not the only ideas.
Thank you very much. Ms. Joy?
Yes, I'm looking at the portion where you said, "Explore establishment of a downtown management entity" that immediately addresses the maintenance of sidewalks, strapping, traffic control devices. I haven't seen that before. We've been doing this for a while. Talk to me about the downtown management entity.
I think, you know, one of the recommendations that came out of the master plan was this downtown nonprofit. And what we discovered throughout the course of the recommendations is that they referred to that organization in several different ways. So this was an example of one of the things that that entity or that type of entity could have overseen. Fundraising was another kind of category that that entity could have overseen. I think the reason that I included it on this slide and where we will likely take it forward in phase one is to incorporate this into the UDC, where rather than have a separate entity, we make it easier for staff to oversee these types of things.
Yes, because these are activities that typically the city has provided.
Yes.
And if you're thinking of a new entity that wants to pay for them, I'm sure Jared Atkinson would be happy for somebody to step in and do that. And I would be too. So you're really not looking for an entity to come in and take over those responsibilities and duties.
No, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking at phase one, year one through five, and I'm looking at the projects that's listed under existing. And as we all know, some of those are already our realities and some will be realities very soon. But I was curious about the graduate student housing project. Can you give us an update on that? I'm sure it kind of took a pause a little bit during COVID-19, our problems there. So could you just give us a little update on where we are on that?
I can, and there may be others in the room that can speak better to this than I can. But my understanding as of last? Did I go away? Okay. No? Okay.
Please continue.
They did have some challenges during the COVID-19 pandemic with, I don't know the details of what kind of postponed their closing, but my understanding is that that project is moving forward as planned with the development group that intended to do it and that we should see movement over there very soon. But that project is still moving forward as planned, just a little later than everybody hoped.
Do you have a date for a grant of work?
I don't.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. I'm no different than anyone else with the excitement of hoping that things really go well for downtown. But I'm going to say this, and I'll continue to say this until I see something in the making or some, something that points us in that direction or to say that we're in that direction. I don't want us to get and make downtown this magic place that no one can enter unless they're a part of a certain group. So I think it's very important that we not forget that we tie downtown into the surrounding areas and make it really an inviting place. Because if we're looking at having these pockets, these parks or whatever, then people want to feel like they can come to the area and take advantage of them. So I think one of the best ways that we do with that is we extend things as a way of waving folks in to say, "Hey, there's some good stuff over here. Come and join us." So I'm going to continue to say that until I see it starting to take place. I think that we don't forget that and that we make it a place that no matter who you are in this city, that you get to come and take part and enjoy.
Thank you for those comments. I'll steal a line from our chairman of the CBD TIF Board, Robert Taylor, before he has the opportunity to come up here and say it himself. But he is always reminding us that downtown is really the only place in Lubbock that everybody has ownership of. And we're very cognizant of that and aware of that and want it to portray that. I'll also point out that Overland Partners repeatedly reminded us that while our downtown is fabulous, our Canyon Lake system is the most beautiful part of our city. And so we really want to be creative and innovative about how we connect those two things and that you go through the downtown to get to that place and back. So I appreciate that.
And just also add that even though down Broadway, you can get there, you can also get there by Nineteenth. So just wanted to share that. And I noticed in looking at the mapping, that that area kind of extends as a part of the mapping area. I don't know how Avenue A got cutted out, but that's something else to talk about later on. But it does extend down Nineteenth Street. And however we get them there, I say we make it a good thing, that we do it in a good way to get people there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Okay, anything further for Ms. Girardi? Thank you. Nice overview, we appreciate that. So I think the, for us, that next is to open the public hearing. So I will open, make sure I don't miss any language here I'm supposed to use. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Now, let's just open to, open for speakers on either side, either for or against the downtown master plan. Mr. Taylor, please come forward. If you'd read, give us your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Okay. Robert Taylor, 4608 Ninety-Sixth Street, Lubbock, Texas. For a long time, by the way. Appreciate the opportunity to address the mayor and the council. I think this document is very important to guide, direct, and push for timely execution of what we want to happen downtown. It's presented in a way that is a living document that can be adjusted, amended, as need be, to be relevant to the existing times and the changing environment, but still be true to our mission of develop downtown. And to your appointment, appoint, Councilman Griffith, approval of this plan does not in any way put anything in stone. Nothing is committed for, no spending, no policy, no firm decisions made. But it sets in motion an orderly way to discuss and address each of these items. It gives urgency, but also, but at the same time, promotes and makes recommendations to timely meet all of the needs of downtown and not just the needs that happen to pop up from time to time. The time is now for Lubbock to move forward. Lubbock should be really an attractive place for people outside of Texas and people inside of Texas, looking for a space, or just looking for space, or looking for a place for healthy living and a great working environment. Any one of those groups looking for those places to relocate, look and compare downtowns. Downtown is, the only part of the city is, she already stole my thunder, the only part of the city that I think everybody owns. And it's also very reflective of the entire city. So we want a very vibrant downtown. And I think an organized manner to approach this is one that we can get something done. I have on my desk a, three different master plans that have been appointed and approved in the past. This needs to be one that will be working and living. And the only way you can do that is have something that you can amend and adjust to the times that are current. So I urge approval, so the TIF, the city staff, and master developer, and the other people that are stakeholders in downtown can get busy and get going on downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate your comments and, more importantly, all your work, your dedication to downtown. Other speakers?
Dan Williams, 4615 Ninth Street, as of a couple days ago. So I am a downtown stakeholder. We've been in downtown for, since 2017 and have seen the small businesses that have come in over the last few years. small businesses that have come in over the last few years and have slowly gotten involved in a lot of committees and various things in the city. And I just urge that we, the city comes alongside and really helps. We need a quarterback and we need, which our TIF can be, and we need a plan that lays out some guidelines for us. And that's what this does. This plan makes a lot of sense. It's well thought through. Overland Partners was very impressive, in my opinion. And the timing of this, I don't think could be any better. Despite the things that have happened in Lubbock, I feel like the economy and the timing is right for downtown. Things are going really good. It's turning around, the investment. I'm in real estate here in town, and we've listed some recent properties in downtown that have moved with multiple offers in less than 30 days for commercial properties, which is extremely rare anywhere in town. And so, to see the local people that are pushing and investing and, you know, places like the Crest Building and like the places that people are coming are all local people that come from here and we've invested into it and we want to see it grow. And so, I think that's just really something that's important. It's important to us. The TIF Board has worked extremely hard to put this together. And a lot of people have. So, I think it's, I just wanted to ask that y'all strongly consider this and help us move forward and keep pushing forward. Because downtown is going to be the place that people come and want to stay. And a walkable environment is the future of what Lubbock needs. We need places that people can come and enjoy and do absolutely everything from living to working. And so, this kind of helps us set that tone for a different kind of environment. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Other speakers?
Good evening, council. My name is Mont McLennan. I'm with McDougal Companies, 5001 West Loop 289. Very soon to be 1500 Broadway. So, we're very excited about moving our company downtown. Shouldn't surprise you at all to hear me say that I like this master plan update. As a statement of policy, I think what I appreciate about it most is that it's intentional in how we're thinking about what we're doing downtown. You know, it brings in a lot of really considered effort for the other things that the city is doing. I served on the CPAC Plan Committee and worked on the 2040 Plan. And there's some policy statements in that plan that are being brought to life as a statement of policy in downtown about the diversity of housing, about different types of uses being used together in the UDC. All of those things are sort of dovetailing in these plans. And it gives the TIF Board, it gives the staff, it gives our company as downtown master developer, marching orders on what to pursue and in what order, to be intentional about the place that we're going to have downtown. You know, what I love about downtown, and I worked downtown for 20 years practicing law at 1306 Broadway, is you're not going to move the county courthouse. You're not going to move the city seat of government. You're not going to move the Canyon Lakes. And Texas Tech is not going to move. And downtown sits right there. It is the heart of all of that. And the community deserves a downtown that is thoughtful and that we're putting our efforts into and that we're not spinning our wheels. We're doing that in a meaningful way. And I think that the plan before you does just that. And I also encourage you to accept it.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan. Other speakers? I will close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of the resolution adopting the downtown master plan?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Chatis. Counselors, their discussion on item 8.3. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm just gonna sit this right here again, Mr. Mayor, and say that it is very important. I think it's a great idea, but I think it's very important that we not forget that there are communities around downtown that need to be tied in and welcomed as a part of this. It need, we have to connect things in this city so that we continue to call ourselves a city. And downtown is one heck of a place to begin to do that. So, that no one forgets that I said it. So, we'll have it on the record twice today, that I think we make sure that we work to tie in those places all around downtown so that citizens of all directions feel that they can be a part and welcomed in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Let's see here, who's next? Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Taylor brought up that he had three downtown plans on his desk. So, let's make sure that third time's the charm. It's time that we get serious about it. And Ms. Patterson-Harris, I agree with you. And having a strong downtown, having a great urban environment will help the neighborhoods around the downtown area. I truly believe it'll continue to bring it up. And I'm very positive about what has happened in our downtown already. It's incredible. As we just drive around just a few blocks north of here, it's pretty amazing what's happening. And I think we should be very proud of it. But we're just really, this is a great step forward, in my opinion. We're not, everything in that plan isn't going to get done, in my opinion. But I think it lays the groundwork that has been spoken. And I appreciate y'all coming forward and not, gentlemen, to speak to us. So, I am excited to get this going.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Joy?
10 years ago, I sat on the TIF Board, and Robert Taylor was on that board. And all we heard were crickets. There was not much going on. And Robert and I both said we hope that before we had to get in a wheelchair to get downtown, we would like to see development downtown. And he's worked very, very hard on that. Mr. Griffith mentioned those three plans. And when Overland Partners was here, they told us that the last plan that was done for the city had some of the same recommendations that we have in this plan. But nothing was done. So, it takes investment from the city, but it also, our private partnerships, public private partnerships, it's gonna, it will take all of that. But people need to remember that good things don't happen just by wishing. There's got to be some impetus behind it. There has to be some funding behind it. This building right here is exactly that. Because it was not in good shape. We have taken it and repurposed it, and it has added and will continue to add to the value and to downtown. And yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris, I agree with you completely. If they don't do something with that underpass that goes down Broadway over to MLK, you and I both are going to be out there with paint, I think, of some kind, to connect where the interstate stops and connects on to Canyon Lakes. And so, I'm very much in favor of doing this. But I too want to be sure that this council, anyway, is committed to seeing that these things do happen.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm bullish on downtown Lubbock. I, first, I'm grateful for everyone, especially the TIF, Mr. Taylor's leadership, the mayor has served on that TIF Board, Ms. Joy. And I've been around long enough to know and see the other plans. But today, we sit with many advantages. And I believe there's commitment at this dais and inside the TIF to stick to that plan. Ms. Joy's right. We sit inside a project today that not only was a long-term decision for the city of Lubbock, but was also a catalyst project for downtown redevelopment. North of here, we see the Buddy Holly Hall Performing Arts coming to completion, would be one of the finest performing arts centers in this part of the country. Soon, the city will convey the old city hall to South Plains College. And we've also seen the work start on the NTS building, which will end up being residences. We know that downtown's developed when there's public investment and private investment, and when people live downtown and when people go to school downtown. And so, I think those are the reasons that we have so many advantages. That we, this is a great plan. We can stick with the plan and adjust the plan as needed. But I'm bullish on downtown Lubbock. And I see it and envision it every day from the 11th floor. So, I'm excited about the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been thinking about this for a couple of weeks. I think I've even voiced this prophecy that I'm going to share with you.
Did you say prophecy?
Prophecy.
That's what I thought. I just want to get both feet on the floor. Okay, I'm ready.
Yes. So, write this down, will you, and date it?
All right, got it.
With the epidemic of COVID-19 and also with some of the things that have happened in our major, big cities across the United States over the last three weeks, I think we, it's been proven that those cities are becoming more unlivable every day. I think you're going to start seeing a mass exodus of people that are looking for places like Lubbock, Texas to call home. People moving their businesses to places like Lubbock, Texas to build their future because it's been ruined in other cities. With that said, that's what I'm saying, that you're, I believe in the next years to come, we're going to see a growth of this city that we haven't even planned for. But we need to start planning for it right now. And we need to make it as attractive as possible for those people that are looking for a place to raise a family, to feel safe. We already have beautiful parks. Let's make a beautiful downtown and support this plan. And Ms. Joy, I remember those times too, that so many plans had been put on the shelf and nobody pulled them out until they decided they maybe needed to be dusted off a little bit. They dusted off and put them back on the shelf. As a community, we need to look at developing a powerful, thriving, fun heart. And that heart of any great city is a downtown. Ms. Patterson-Harris, I agree with you too. We need to make sure that we don't forget our neighborhoods. Because even though the downtown is the heart of great cities, our neighborhoods are its soul. So, with that said, Mr. Mayor, that's my prophecy. I hope you wrote that down.
Got it.
But we've got, we're gonna have, not only we're gonna have a downtown renaissance, but we're gonna have a boom that I don't think any of us can even begin to fathom now because people are looking for places like Lubbock, Texas to call home. Thank you very much.
Well said, Mr. Christian. Mr. Chatis?
Thank you, Mayor. Very excited about this conversation because it just happens to be right in the middle of my district. I want to hear what everybody wanted to say. Takes visionaries, takes dreamers, and it all comes true. We talked about the underpass at Broadway. We talked about 19th Street. Failed to mention Buddy Holly, the underpass there also. That connects to the north side of town. That connects to my old neighborhood where I still live. But this is great. It's an exciting event. It's, again, the visionaries. I'm very happy to be a part of it. Look forward to the parks in the downtown area. Always make reference to my age, but it's a great benefit when you become this age. Because I remember back in the 60s, way before the tornado ever hit, downtown was thriving. You couldn't find a parking spot in the downtown area. That's the vision that I have, to where people are, it's so thriving that you can't even find a parking space. That would be, oh, so ideal. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chatis. I think you guys have said it all. Got a lot of work to do. We've got some momentum, a little wind in our back, but a lot of work to do. Are there any further questions or comments? Excuse me. Let's close the, I don't think I've officially closed the public hearing. So, did I, okay, and we got a motion too? Yeah, we did. Okay. Any further comments? After, that prophecy threw me off. I'm sorry. I don't disagree. It just threw me off a little bit. We rarely get, we rarely get prophecy at a council meeting. So, okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item 8.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Counsel, item 8.4 begins a number of items from planning. They are all second reads, and it runs from 8.4 through 8.11. Counsel, I know we spent some, I know we spent time on these in our last meeting. I know Mr. Isom is here to brief us on these to the degree we want to be briefed. I'm suggesting a quick overview, a real quick overview. Is that okay with you, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I mean, like, really quick.
A real quick overview for Mr. Isom. And then, if, I think we, it looked to be like, based upon where we were last time, we could probably consider these collectively. Is that, Ms. Joy, you want, is that okay with you?
Move to consider 8.4 through 8.11 together.
Okay. So, I'll go and take that as a motion to approve. I got a motion to approve. I got a second for Mr. Griffith. Before we have any discussion vote, why don't you run through these, if you would, Mr. Isom? I think Ms. Patterson-Harris said it at a pretty high level, okay?
Can do. So, item 8.4 is case 1501G for Charles Bolton. The request is to rezone property from general retail district C3 to commercial district C4 with the intention of opening an auto sales dealership at 1506 50th Street. 21 notifications were sent out, and we received one in opposition and none in support. Here we show the location of the opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located north of 50th Street and east of Avenue P. You can also see the single-family homes to the north and the other commercial districts along 50th Street. Existing zoning outside of C3 with a mix of single-family to the north and south, and C3 to the east, and C3 and C4 to the west. The future land use map does call for commercial in this area. Site photos show the existing structure as well as the development around the subject site. The application adheres to the spirit of the future land use map and comprehensive plan as this area is designated for light, commercial, and retail. And the proposed use is compatible with other auto-related business uses along this corridor. And the site has adequate access and public infrastructure. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Okay, anything on, for Mr. Isom on 8.4?
Good job.
That's pretty quick. You like that?
I'm told I talk fast, though.
Let's move to item 8.5. It's on page 825.
So, item 8.5 is case 1893 CC for West Shadow Hills LLC, represented by Tyler Gentry. The request is to rezone property from general retail district C3 to two-family district R2 with the intention of constructing townhomes. Nine notifications were sent out, and we received none in support or in opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located north of 4th Street and west of Homestead Avenue. This site shows the development in the area. I would note that between this site and 4th Street, there is a commercial development underway. The existing zoning is C3 with a mix of two-family and family apartment district to the north, high-density apartments to the east, and C3 to the south and the west. The A1 zone property is currently developed as a single-family subdivision. The future land use map does call for low-density residential in this area. The future land use map does call for low-density residential in this area, and the site photos show the existing development and the development surrounding the subject site. The application is in compliance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan as this area is designated for low-density residential, and the townhomes are consistent with this designation. And the proposed use is compatible with existing and expected development in the area and has adequate access and public infrastructure, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this... Approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on 8.5? Let's go to 8.6. It's on page 837.
Item 8.6 is case 2538J for Beaton Bow Homes, represented by Chris Berry. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1 to two-family district R2 at 8931 19th Street. Sent out 18 notifications. We received one in favor and two in opposition. And this map shows the location of the supportive opposition. The support didn't provide any reasons for their stance, but the opposition focused on the development of the duplex. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange. Generally located south of 19th Street and west of Endler Avenue. Much of the surrounding area is currently used as farmland with a residential subdivision to the east. The existing zoning on site is R1 with apartment medical to the north and R1 to the east, south, and west. The future land use map does call for low-density residential in this area. And the site photos show the undeveloped nature of this property. The applicant has provided this plan, which shows the location of the duplexes in the 45-foot wide lots and examples of their product that they'd be constructing. The application is in compliance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan as it calls for low-density residential in this area, which R2 does allow for that type of development. And the proposed development is consistent with present and expected development in the area, and engineering is requiring that a sewer and sewer shed study be provided by the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Anything for Mr. Isom on 8.6? Okay, let's go to 8.7. 8.7 is on page 861.
Item 8.7 is case 2548A for Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from garden office GO to family apartment district A1 at 1301 1311 58th Street. The intention of the rezoning is to construct a series of duplexes. We sent out 27 notifications, and we received one in favor and one in opposition, and they are shown on this map here. The opposition indicated that they didn't want new rental property to be constructed in the area. We also had additional opposition at the public hearing that discussed items like traffic and crime. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange. Generally located south of 58th Street and west of Avenue Q. This image shows the subject site as vacant with single-family subdivisions to the north and commercial development to the west and to the... Single-family to the south and commercial development to the west and to the north. The existing zoning on site is general office... Or garden office, sorry, GO, with a mix of multifamily and commercial districts to the north, interstate highway commercial to the east, and R1 to the south. The future land use map identifies offices being appropriate in this area with a subject site just on the border between the office and low-density residential to the south. The site photos show the existing vacant lot as well as some of the development in the area. While the future land use map does show the site designated for future office, staff felt that the adjacency to the low-density residential designation could allow for a duplex development to be a suitable buffer between the two. And the proposed development is consistent with present and expected development in the area and would provide, again, a suitable buffer between the residential uses to the south and the commercial and office developments to the north. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of seven to two to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Anything on 8.7, Counsel? All right, let's move to 8.8. It's on page 879.
Item 8.8 is case 2933F for Edge Concepts, represented by Centerline Engineering. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1 to general commercial district C3 at 8201 Quincy Avenue. We sent out 11 notifications. We received one in favor and none in opposition. Here we show the location of the property in favor of the request. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange. Generally located south of 82nd Street and east of Quincy Avenue. Existing zoning on site is R1 with specific use for reduced setbacks with a mix of interstate highway commercial to the north, general retail to the east and west, and single-family to the south. The future land use map does identify this as commercial. The site photos show the existing development as well as some of the development in the local area. The proposal is in compliance with both the future land use map and comprehensive plan as this area is designated as commercial, and the proposed development is consistent with present and expected development in the area as adequate access and public infrastructure, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on item 8.8? Let's move to item 8.9. It's on page 898.
Item 8.9 is case 3094B for Beaton Bow Homes, represented by Ronnie Wallace. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1 to two-family district R2 at 901 Wabash. We sent out 23 notifications, and we received none in favor and 11 in opposition. This response map does show the opposition, as well as we received a petition of opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission with over 113 signatures from some of the surrounding neighborhoods. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange. Generally located north of Loop 289 and west of North Cypress Road. Existing zoning on site is R1 with single-family districts that surround to the north of Loop 289 and then some industrial and heavy manufacturing districts to the south. The future land use map does identify this as commercial, and the site photos show the undeveloped nature of this property. The applicant, again, has provided a plan for the subdivision along with some photographs of their existing product. While the future land use map and comp plan call for commercial and light retail in the area, the intensity of the R2 district is appropriate for the area, and adheres to the spirit of the map and the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding area as it provides the opportunity for a mix of housing types, and it also has adequate access and public infrastructure. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this by a vote of eight to one to zero.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on item 8.9? Okay, Mr. Isom, if you move to 8.10, page 931, Counsel.
Item 8.10 is case 3152A for AGS Development, represented by Stan Robertson. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1, specific use to single-family district R1, specific use for garden homes at 4509 through 4535 22nd Place and 2303 Toledo Avenue. We sent out 24 notifications and received one in favor and one in opposition. Here we show the location of those letters. We did receive some additional letters that are included in your packet that discuss items such as access, noise, and the potential for rental property in the area. Here we show the subject site, generally located north of Marsha Sharp Freeway and east of Toledo Avenue. The existing zoning, again, is R1 specific use with single-family districts to the north and west, general retail to the east, the northeast, and interstate highway commercial across Marsha Sharp Freeway. The future land use map does identify this as low-density residential. And here we show some photos of the existing site as well as some of the development in the area. And the applicant did provide these images regarding the garden homes of the interior or the exterior and the floor plan, as well as some interior photos. The proposed R1 is consistent with the future land use map and principles of the comprehensive plan and is also compatible with the surrounding area. The property does also have adequate access and public infrastructure, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on 8.10, Counsel? Let's move to finally to 8.11. It's on page 951.
Item 8.11 is case 3410 for Nikonor Manzinalas, represented by Joe Ayakno. The request is to rezone property from general retail district C3 to commercial district C4. We sent out eight notifications and received none in favor or in opposition. Here we show the subject site, generally located south of Clovis Road and west of North University. The existing zoning on site is C3 with a mix of heavy manufacturing, commercial districts, multifamily, and single-family districts surrounding the site. The future land use map does identify this area as commercial. And here we show some site photos of the existing buildings as well as some of the development in the area. While the future land use map and comprehensive plan call for light, commercial, and retail in the area, the C4 district does allow for many of those, many automobile-related uses, which are consistent up and down this corridor. The request also adheres to the spirit of the comprehensive plan, and with the proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding area as there are many other auto-related uses in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions, Counsel, for Mr. Isom on 8.11? Before Mr. Isom sits down, anything from him? Okay, Brian, thank you very much. All right, Counsel, any comments or questions on the dice? We've got a motion on the floor to approve items 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, 8.9, 8.10, and 8.11. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we will now move to item 8.12. 8.12 is on page 962. Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion on item 8.12?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'm going to consider while I authorize the use of power of eminent domain to acquire an electric utility easement encumbering .049 acres of real property purportedly owned by Joe and Connie Corrales, being a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 6, Block S, J dot case survey.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, if we can wait till we do the presentation to where we can put up the legal description during the motion, I would appreciate that so we can display that to the public.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Griffith, that's my fault. Do we get to that point so we can all be there at one time? Ms. Smith, you're going to bring us a quick overview of item 8? You're going to do all three at the same time, or do we have to do them individually because of the motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have to do them individually.
Okay, let's start with 8.12, please.
All right, and Amber Miller with Crenshaw Dupree Mylan will make these presentations on 8.12, 8.13, and 8.14.
Okay, thank you.
We have... We do have a presentation loaded. We just think we do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel. My name is Amber Miller. I'm with Crenshaw Dupree Mylan. LPNL has retained me to help them with the Chapter 21 condemnation work associated with some rebuild of some existing infrastructure and some title defects as well associated with those efforts. Just a real quick overview, I think it's important that you and the public know that this particular project is associated with LPNL's efforts to upgrade the existing system and to add reliability to our electric infrastructure. And so it's both a system-wide reliability project as well as connection to ERCOT, which both of are very important topics to you all. And so this particular project is called Holly to Southeast because of the names of the two substations. That is an upgrade of an existing 69 KV transmission line to a 115 KV transmission line. That's very nerdy electric speak for it's bigger, it can move more electricity, it's more reliable, okay? Typically, when LPNL comes to you with a request for eminent domain or condemnation, let's be clear, we're very mindful of taking people's property. And we want to negotiate, and negotiations have occurred very successfully up and down this line with landowners to expand what is an existing easement 15 feet or so to the north and nine or 10 feet to the south to have a larger easement for this larger infrastructure. Those have taken place wildly successfully all along the line. We want you to know that. The particular tracks we present to you this evening, we are, let's say, 90% confident that we know who the landowners are, but there are gaps in the chain of title with these particular pieces of property. And out of an abundance of caution, we come to you with this request to move forward with eminent domain. We continue to negotiate. We continue to look for those true answers to the gaps and chains of title and hope that we can voluntarily transact with the landowners to the extent we can't. The property code and the Texas Rules of Civil Procedure give us the mechanism by which we can continue to move forward and get the easement that the city needs to move forward with its plan. So with that, real quick, we'll highlight the project itself. What you see in front of you is a depiction of the actual project. The dark blue line in the middle of your screen is 82nd Street. And you'll see Highway 87, the Tohka Highway, the interstate, however you choose to label it, is the north and south red line kind of over toward the left-hand side of the screen. And so this is primarily what we refer to as East 82nd Street. We have noted where the subject tracks at issue are located, and they are either adjacent or very close to one another here this evening. Again, just to highlight, there is an existing transmission line and right-of-way in place. That easement has been in place since 1964. It's a 10-foot wide easement. We simply seek to expand that easement along the route of around 82nd Street. You'll see the names of the purported owners of the properties that are at issue in front of you. Those names are listed in order of the items on your agenda. So 8.12 is Joe and Connie Corrales. We have been in contact with Mr. and Mrs. Corrales. They certainly think they own the property. There just happen to be defects in the chain of title prior to their taking the property. Item number 8.13 is Robert Coppage. He is deceased. We are in contact with his family members. Again, we are relatively confident that his estate has title to the property, but we still have some work to do there. And finally, the estate of Irma Crawford, as the name implies, Miss Crawford is deceased. There are a variety of title challenges in the chain of title there. We've identified six different descendants of Miss Crawford that we believe are holding the property now as undivided interest holders. We've just still got some additional work to do and want to have, again, out of an abundance of caution, certainty of who those title owners are. I just want to speak real quick to the process and throw it out there because I know the questions are, what if you don't find out? And how do you know? And again, the Texas Rules of Civil Procedure tell us that to the extent we're dealing with an interest in property and we don't know the owners, okay? So the rules contemplate these situations occur. Then there's a mechanism by which we name the property owners we know together with anyone who might hold an interest in that particular tract, and we describe it. The second part of that unique process is, in addition to serving the individuals we think we know to have an interest with that lawsuit, we will also publish a notice in the paper. Here it would be the Lubbock AJ once a week for four weeks. That enables you, us, to identify anyone additional who may have an interest in that property. And then we can continue to move forward with the normal, with the normal Chapter 21 process. On your screen is just a depiction. These aren't very fancy pictures, but it just gives you an idea of where the existing easement is located and what the expansion will look like. And this is associated with Mr. and Miss Corrales' tract. The numbers that you see kind of in the middle of the screen, those are tract numbers assigned by the project. They don't really denote anything as it relates to the property records. The blue line is the center line of the existing easement. The two white lines on either side of that, that's the 10-foot easement you currently hold as a city of Lubbock. And then each of the yellow lines show the proposed expansion easement. You'll see it's a little bit further to the north than it is to the south. And so those are the... That's the existing or the proposed easement. Just out of point of reference, the total easement take is .049 acres of additional land from the Corrales's. We provide this image to you all to just demonstrate that there will be two separate property descriptions that you'll see in your materials. That's because there are actually two different areas, one to the north of the existing easement, one to the south. We provide those property descriptions for you in your materials. Moving on, the property held by the estate of Robert Coppage, the same donations... Pardon me?
At this point, if we can take a motion on 8.12.
Okay, so while we have the...
Sure.
We want to do this while we have the legal description up? Is that what we want to do here? Okay. I know, Mr. Griffith, do you have it memorized now? You're going to read it for us? And we'll come back to you again.
Yeah, and you're welcome for being municipality. The government code requires you to have a particular motion, right, for the benefit of the audience? So that's what we provide to you in your packet that says that each of these tracks.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion on 8.12?
Thank you, Mayor.
Want to make sure you had it before I turned you on, you know? I want to make sure you had it before I turned you on, you know?
I move that the City of Lubbock authorize the use of power of eminent domain to acquire an electric utility easement encumbering point zero four nine acres of real property purportedly owned by Joe and Connie Corrales, being a portion of the northwest quarter of Section Six, Block S, J K Survey, abstract number four, seven, four. Lubbock County, Texas, is described indeed to Joe Corrales and wife Connie Corrales, recorded in document number two, one, five, oh, one, twenty-five, eighty. Deed records of Lubbock County, Texas, in the northwest corner of said parcel located at approximately eight hundred ninety feet easterly, as measured along the south line of Eighty-Second Street. From the northeast corner of a forty-foot wide row, AKA Guava Avenue, granted to the County of Lubbock, recorded in volume thirteen oh three, page seven, four, seven, and more particularly described in Exhibit A to the resolution now under consideration, and on the overhead screen being now displayed to the audience, for the use, for the public use of constructing and operating the Holly to Southeast transmission and distribution lines and related, how do you pronounce this?
Appartnances.
Appartnances. In the City of Lubbock, Texas.
I wanted to pause for just a moment, have a minute, we have a second. Thank you for the motion and the second. You built a crescendo with that, I was very impressed by that. Okay, counsel, is there discussion on the, the motion on item eight, twelve? I know we had, we had a chance, Mr. Chaddis.
Clarification, I believe it was stated page seven, four, seven. Should it not be seven, four, nine? I think it might make a difference. I apologize for misspoke. Mr. Chaddis, page seven, four. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any further corrections or any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Griffith's motion to approve item eight, twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? And the motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Ms. Miller, if you continue to item eight, thirteen, and I think you've done, you've done the description yet, so let's go to, go to item eight, thirteen. Counsel, if you're, if you're following, this is on page nine, seventy-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, item eight, thirteen, same introductory comments as associated with eight, twelve. This particular tract, again, is purportedly owned by the estate of Robert Copege. LPNL is present in contact with Mr. Copege's sister, and we continue to work hard to file the papers in order to voluntarily transact. Out of the abundance of caution, we bring this proposal to you to approve eminent domain to move forward. And the graph you see in front of you depicts the same image as the Corrales', and you see the existing easement along the proposed expansion. And again, the survey that was prepared on behalf of LPNL, the City of Lubbock demonstrates and shows the existing ten-foot wide easement, and together with the two easement areas that will be the expanded singular easement at the end of the project. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, then, we'll, we'll show both tract one and two, the property descriptions, and with that, we would present that tract for your motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Joy, do you have a, do you have a motion on item eight, thirteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City of Lubbock authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire an electric utility easement encumbering zero decimal zero four six acres of real property purportedly owned by the estate of Robert E. Copege, being the northeast one-quarter of Section Six, Block S, J K Survey, abstract number four, seventy-four, Lubbock County, Texas, and described in deed to Robert E. Copege, no vesting deed of the deed records of Lubbock County, Texas, and located at approximately the northwest corner of said parcel, being approximately eight hundred and fifteen feet easterly, as measured along the south line of Eighty-Second Street, from the northeast corner of a forty-foot wide right-of-way, also known as Guava Avenue, granted to the County of Lubbock, recorded in volume thirteen, zero, three, page seven, forty-nine, and is more particularly described in Exhibit A to the resolution, now under consideration, and on the overhead screen being now displayed to the audience, for the public use of constructing and operating the Holly to Southeast transmission and distribution lines and related appartnances in the City of Lubbock, Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Okay, counsel, discussion on item eight, thirteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Joy.
We haven't said this, you did say it early on, that the reason we're taking this action is because we've got some title issues that need to be taken care of, is that correct?
That's correct.
And there are some amounts of money that have been discussed with the parties that we know about.
Absolutely, that is correct, that is correct, go ahead.
And so, when you, these are presented to commissioners who will hear these cases, they will also hear about how much money, at least you think at this point, has either been agreed to, or would be reasonable, is that correct?
Absolutely, and thank you for raising that point. And once the unique lawsuit caption and publication rules are followed, the next step is, is you point out, special commissioners are appointed by a court. And those individuals typically have the job of what we, what we say in, in kind of, you know, short order in condemnation law, write a number down. And that means they only write down the value of the land that is being taken or subject to eminent domain. We anticipate through this process that it would be what is oftentimes referred to as a friendly condemnation. And we have been in negotiations with the purported owners. We are, in theory, in agreement on what that dollar amount is. That would still need to be presented to those commissioners for their consideration and approval, just to satisfy the jurisdictional requirements, in order to move forward and to know that easement is in place through the process of eminent domain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Further questions or comments on item eight, thirteen? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item eight, thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move now to item eight, fourteen. Ms. Miller, would you brief us on that, please?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is on page nine, eighty-six, by the way.
The, the final tract we have to present to you tonight is owned, or we believe to be owned by the estate of Irma Crawford. This is a particularly unique tract, just in terms of the chain of title that leads to us believing that Ms. Crawford owns it. Nevertheless, you'll, you'll see the same image that shows where the expanded easement area would be located in relation to the existing easement. And the total additional easement space is just, just shy of, of a tenth of an acre, it's point zero nine six acres, about seventeen foot to the north, or seventeen and a half feet extending north from the existing easement, and about nine and a half feet extending to the south, very similar in fashion to the prior two tracks we presented to you. Again, you'll see the survey that demonstrates the existing ten-foot easement that the City of Lubbock has, and then the proposed expansion. Again, they'll, together, we'll have two property descriptions that you'll see on the screen, and that are a part of your motion, and will be a part of the legal caption, to include on our documents. And so, Mr. Mayor, we would present the estate of Irma Crawford in item eight, fourteen, for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Mr. Christian, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I offer the same thing as my fellow colleagues did regarding eight, fourteen, to clean this up? And I make a mo, I make a motion to, to do this, if you might, I might can read that motion, please.
I'm, yeah, I'm gonna have to ask you to do that, so that we would satisfy our jurisdictional requirements, thank you.
You're trying to, you're trying to see, you're trying to see if we, you can get by with having to read it?
I don't have to read it?
No, you, no, you do.
It's not a prophecy. It's a reality.
It's title work, it's close to prophecy, but not quite there.
Okay, very good, thank you. I move the City of Lubbock authorize the, the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire electrical utility easements incumbent on the zero point zero nine six acres of real property purportedly owned by the estate of Irma Crawford, being in a portion of the Section Six, Block S, J, ser, case survey, abstract number four, seven, four, Lubbock County, Texas, as described in the deed of Selvan J Crawford. And I don't, we need to correct that, though, that wasn't S I, S E L V A N, correct? It was.
Selva, right?
What was the, what was that gentleman's name, I want to make sure I say it right?
Selva.
Okay, Selvan J Crawford, recorded in volume fifty-one, oh, eight, page fifty-two, the deed of records of Lubbock, Lubbock County, and located at approximately twenty-six, oh, three, East County Road, seven, one, one, zero, Lubbock, Texas, seven, nine, four, oh, four, and is particularly described in Exhibit A to the resolution now under consideration on the overhead screen now being displayed to the audience, for the public use of constructing and operating the Holly to Southeast transmission and distribution line and, and related apparatus, apparatus in the City of, City of Lubbock, Texas. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. So we've got a motion and a second on item eight, fourteen. Further questions for Ms. Miller or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item eight, fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Miller, Ms. Smith, appreciate you. Okay, we'll move to item, finally, I might add, we'll move to item eight, fifteen. It is on page nine, ninety-eight. In order to begin a discussion, is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Costelich.
All right, thank you, Mayor, counsel. Excuse me. It was great to, to be with you tonight, to, to be presenting this to you. Mayor, counsel, as, as we talk a lot, small businesses here in Lubbock are, are part of the, the, the lifeblood of this economy, they're a pillar that we rely on heavily. So in this recent pandemic, when there was a lot of stay-at-home orders, a lot of people having to shut down, that really affected our, our small business community. So we're, we're excited tonight to bring you, now that we have the, the funding in hand, an economic relief package that, that we can help support those who have, have really supported this economy for so many years. Now, counsel, I know that all of you are very familiar with the CARES Act at this point, we've, we've talked about it ad nauseam. But we have a lot of new eyes on this, the new, new people that are gonna be interested in this program, that, that are just getting, joining this conversation. So I think it's only prudent upon us to be able to explain a little bit about where this money is coming from, and what the uses are, before we go into the programs. So the, the CARES Act was signed into law at the federal level on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And there were a lot of different programs, funding mechanisms, that were all put into place into this one CARES Act package, that, that ultimately came out to about two trillion dollars of economic incentives, excuse me, packages for economic support throughout the nation. Part of this was the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which allocated a hundred and fifty billion dollars to state, local, and tribal governments. Now, the US Treasury took that, and they, they've allocated to the states, local jurisdictions, and to, to the tribal governments, based upon population. Now, the Treasury worked directly with states and any local government entity that had a population over five hundred thousand, and gave them their, their funding directly. For everyone else, the population's less than five hundred thousand, they gave them, the US Treasury funneled the money through the state, and the state has to manage the program to get the money out to, to local jurisdictions like ourselves. So the State of Texas set up the grant program, using the Texas Division of Emergency Management, TDEM, to facilitate this grant program. The City of Lubbock, based upon our population, was allocated fourteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, of which we have received two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. So what can these CRF dollars be used for? Really, they, they can only be used to cover costs that, one, were necessary expenditures due to this public health emergency, two, weren't accounted for in our most recently approved budget, or three, and three, I should say, were incurred between March first, twenty twenty, and what will be December thirtieth, twenty twenty, when this program runs out. So the eligible expenses, they, they really have six categories, and the categories are broad. Now, there is a lot of documentation behind the, these six categories, but in, in general, those are medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, those types of employees. And then there's also, number four, the expenditures to facilitate compliance with COVID-nineteen measures. Number five is which, the, the category that we're here talking about with this program, any expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. And then, category six is a little bit of a catch-all, any other COVID-related expenses that are reasonably necessary. So what does that mean? It's, there, there hasn't been any clear guidance of what six really means, but everything that we're doing really fits into one of the first five. So what we have so far in, in this package is, we, we have received our initial funding of, like I said, two point eight million dollars. Here in the city right now, we have somewhere around a million dollars that we're reserving out of that to, to reimburse for our expenses that we've incurred to date for, for COVID-nineteen. That gives us a little bit over one point eight million dollars remaining through the action tonight on item eight, point two. We do have one point two million dollars appropriated of general fund reserve. That, that is reimbursable, so once we pay that money out, we will submit everything to TDEM, and get that one point two million dollars reimbursed. So that gives us a total economic incentive assistance of just over three million dollars. And in the workshops, we went over these in detail, we can bring those presentations back up if needed. But what we're gonna do right here is just go over the programs of service, the managing agency, and the, the allotments. So we have the rent and utility assistance that, that's gonna be managed through Neighborhood House, five hundred thousand dollars for each of those programs, rent and utilities, so one million dollars total. Childcare assistance, which will be managed through YWCA, for five hundred thousand dollars. Mortgage assistance from the, that would be managed through the Lubbock Housing Finance Corp. for five hundred thousand dollars. And the small business micro grants for one million dollars that will be, the applications will go through Market Lubbock, Inc. They will compile the list of the recipients, hand that list to us, and the City of Lubbock will actually pay out those micro grants. Mayor, counsel, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, questions for, for Mr. Costelich? No question, Ms. Joy?
Yes, we got, we got to have questions.
Start with you, Ms. Joy.
Yes, let's go back to that last slide, Mr. Costelich. When the CARES Act was passed, was there a requirement that the state should manage the funds for the cities under five hundred thousand people? Or do you know?
There wasn't that specific language. They did come out with a clarification later that said states could decide how they were gonna manage the, the funds for the local jurisdictions.
So that was an option that was given to the state to manage the funds for the City of Lubbock, basically?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Atkinson, I think you wanted to add in.
And, and after, when we looked at eight point, is it eight point three?
Eight point two.
Eight point two, I had it up here, here it is. The total appropriation is fourteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand. And we initially, you said we received it today?
We received it back on June third.
June third? The two million, eight twenty-two thousand, six hundred, or twenty percent?
Yes, ma'am.
But in order to get the remaining funds, we have to pay it upfront and get reimbursement, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And we don't know yet whether those reimbursements will come quickly, how they'll be handled, do we?
We, we do not. We, we do not. They, they keep referencing, they want to do this as expeditiously as possible, but they are gonna be going through, just like any other, like, like a FEMA grant, they're gonna be going through every expense that we've incurred, and they'll be scrutinizing everything.
Well, the 1.2 million, the general fund reserve that says it's reimbursable, that that would have to come out of our general fund, and then they're to pay us back out of the monies that were allocated to the city of Lubbock, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
The other monies that you're showing, the rent and utility, the childcare and the mortgage, that's from a separate funding, is it not?
This is all from that CRF.
But it didn't, doesn't all come, does it all come through TDEM?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
All of it, even the rent, utility, childcare, and mortgage?
This, this package, yes, ma'am. This is all, that CRF package, so that, that's all that one funding source. We are choosing to break it up into these buckets.
Well, looking at the city of Lubbock CRF distribution, I don't see the 2 million that's going to rent, utility, childcare, and mortgage assistance in your summary at the top.
We, we do have, we have the 1.8, the, the initial 2.8 that we have in hand right now, less the $1 million for our expenses, leaves us that 1.8 million. Then we're putting in another 1.2 million of our, our funds that will be reimbursed, so that this total that we're talking about is the 3 million plus the million, so it's really, really 4 million that we're looking at. It's just a 2.8 plus our 1.2.
So we are actually funding the entire 3 million? No? Mr. Atkinson, help me out.
This, this really goes back to the discussion we had at our council meeting. So for the moment, set the 2.8 aside. The city of Lubbock was allocated the $14.1 million in total. Our grant agreement with TDEM, TDEM, our grant agreement contains a clause in it that says, Blue, go back to your six categories, please. Our grant agreement says that we cannot spend more than 25% of our $14.1 on 4, 5, or 6. How you spend the 25% within 4, 5, and 6 is the prerogative of the council, as long as it meets the requirements of the CARES Act. Okay, so let's go back to the, to final slide, Blue. All right. You have two buckets, then, one just under 11, one at 3.5 million dollars. An $11 million bucket can be used for any of the six, but at least 3/4 of it to be spent on those first three, and I misstated, let me do that again. Your $11 million bucket has to all be spent on the first three.
First three.
So we're back to the 3.5, which is the subject of tonight's discussion. The 2.8 only comes in because it was an advance, and it is the only advance that we get. It's not necessarily in the 75 bucket or the 25 bucket, it is just 20% that they paid us upfront. The next dollar we spend over 2.82 million dollars has to be spent out of the city's pocket, whether it's in the big bucket or the little bucket. We have to spend the next dollar out of our pocket and ask to have that paid back to us. So you have programs totaling $3 million that are proposed under that category number five. To fully fund those programs and to move quickly, we needed to set that 1.2 million dollars out of the city's general fund reserve up on the table. That's what we'll request reimbursement on, I hope, hope that speaks to the question. The 2.8 gets confusing because of how it was advanced, but nothing else is.
Yeah, I would, I would only mention that if the feds had handled us like they did with people over half a million, we would be having this discussion because we'd have gotten our money upfront and hole at $174 a head instead of $55 a head. We'll still be paying taxes at $174 a head. Now, if we keep asking questions, you're gonna get a real sermon from me on this one, but, but I'll pause. Mark me as undecided, right, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
And I guess the follow-up to that is, the million dollars that we've already incurred for the expenses during COVID-19, you're, you'll take that money out of that 2.8 to reimburse the general fund who's already paid those expenses, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I wonder who's monitoring the state?
Other questions or comments? I, I wanna just thank Mr. Howerton, Ms. Murphy for their work on their, on the, with the rent and utility assistance, and the childcare assistance, and the mortgage assistance, working with our partners on that. I'm also thankful to the Market Lubbock team, and Mr. Atkinson and Mr. Kostolich for working, working on that and getting that ready and allowing Ms. Joy and me to work a little bit to try to, on behalf of the entire council. Counsel, our job really, after we, after we consider this, and I expect to approve, our job begins really with education, and we've really, we've got to really go to work on, on this immediately. I know that, I know that there's a, a press release already, ready to go on the, the, what, we support Lubbock, is that right, Mr. Mr., Mr. Atkinson, is that correct?
That is correct.
Support Lubbock, are we gonna use that for the overall, for, for the entire, is that just for the micro grants?
That is just for the micro grant, and that will take the individual or the business straight to the application, straight to the assistance email, and so forth. There will be a press conference tomorrow. We had originally thought we could do that at 11:00, that'll run across our public health press conference, so I think we'll do it early in the afternoon, and that will announce all of the programs.
I know Ms. Murphy had suggested that they were already working with their partners to make this news well-known, we'd probably need to do the same thing with United Way and some of the folks that, you know, that, that are plugged into the social services in our community, and so I think that's important that we get the, the word out, okay? All right, Mr. Kostolich, you have anything else to add?
No, sir, that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Questions or comments before we, before we consider the, the, this, this item? Ms. Patterson-Harris, hold on one moment. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I would just kind of make the same point that I made in reference to some of the other programs earlier today, is that we do big. We, we really, really kick this thing a whole bunch of notches, if I can say that, so that individuals will know that this is available. I'm curious as to how soon we'll kick it out, and maybe share it with those of us who can get that information out to individuals. I think it's important because according to what we're about to consider here, we're only looking at a, a small window of time with regard to the small businesses in which to get this done, and I don't want to have some folks miss out with getting the assistance that they need because we didn't do everything that we could to get that information out, so that's just my only plea, and my only ask in this deal, is that we make sure that we get the information out to, to those folks who are definitely in need.
Yeah, well said, other comments? Thank you, Mr. Kostolich.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, we've got a motion and a second on the floor for item 815. All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, I believe that takes care of our business. Ms. Garza, is it good from your, from your perspective? Thank you. Mr. Weaver, anything from you? Ms. Patterson, Ms. Patterson-Harris is giving you a hard time down here, Mr. Christian. She wanna make sure there weren't any more prophecies coming tonight, so... I'll get back to you. I may have one in the morning, I'll do it. Okay, it's 6:50 PM, it's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, Lubbock City Council is adjourned.